Good evening. Good evening, and welcome to this, the May 14th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting into order. Let the roll call show that all of the members of the council are present and accounted for. I ask that you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Question for the city attorney, was there any reportable action taken in the closed session?
Mr. Mayor, no, there was not.
Okay. Thank you very much. I didn't recall, but just always want to check. Okay, so, we have a number of proclamations and presentations that we would like to make tonight, recognizing exceptional people and exceptional circumstances. That's right. So with that, it is with some sadness that I recognize the retirement of Susan Neer, who was our exemplary city clerk. She, the city clerk really runs the city. I mean, she, they make sure that everything abides by the Brown Act, make sure the council does what they need to do, and get the information out to the community so that the community understands what's happening, and then it's this wonderful conduit of information between the community and the council. And this is something that Susan Neer has done, and just did an exemplary job. And we didn't want to let her retire, but there is a higher priority, and that's grandchildren. So, congratulations to Susan on that. With that, whereas Susan began her career with the city of Livermore on August 18th, 2003, when she was hired as a deputy city clerk, records manager, was promoted to assistant city clerk on October 18th, 2004, and appointed to city clerk on June 8th, 2009. Susan holds a Master Municipal Clerk Certificate from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, and whereas, as the city clerk, Susan was the compliance officer for federal, state, and local statutes, ensuring transparency to the public. Her dedication was evident in her outstanding support to the city council, city staff, and the public, exemplifying trust and professionalism, providing expert knowledge of principles and practices of municipal government. And whereas Susan was instrumental in the creation of the city's electronic database, providing data access to city records dating back to the city's incorporation in 1876, public records 24/7 via the website, and transition from paper to electronic, city council packet agendas resulting in a greener and more efficient process. And I will tell you, there are thousands, hundreds of thousands of pages that we have saved by going to electronic format. Whereas Susan oversaw six consolidated elections and performed 100 civil wedding ceremonies. Susan was an advocate for promoting an understanding of the local government process by holding numerous mock city council meetings, putting the mock back in democracy.[217.76][217.76](laughter) Meetings for students and adults, and was the creator and program manager of the overwhelmingly popular key to the city Local Government Academy for residents and those working in the city, affording them a unique behind-the-scenes look at municipal operations. Susan held 48 academy sessions and graduated 76 participants, and they go on to be some of the best advocates that we have for the city. And whereas known for her unparalleled attention to detail, the city clerk's office maintained a high level of excellence and professionalism. She was an advocate of continual learning, promoting the municipal clerk profession by supporting educational effort, and was a champion of new ideas, always encouraging suggestions to improve operations. In retirement, Susan plans to enjoy her family, especially her new granddaughter, Aubrey Elizabeth, her soon-to-be-born grandson, her golden retrievers, Bueller...[281.64][281.64](laughter) Bueller, and Gidget. Pilates and yoga classes scheduled at her leisure, and spending her evenings, including Monday nights, yes, with her husband Mark. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Livermore thanks Susan Neer for over 14 years of dedicated service to the community, and wishes her well in retirement.[307.64][307.64](applause)
Yeah, I don't get to speak very often at council meetings, but I do want to thank mayor and the council for their continued support through the years. Past 14 years have been quite an adventure. As your clerk, I've been very proud of the contributions, accomplishments, and dedication from all members of the city clerk's office staff. I personally want to thank deputy city clerk Jean Bell for her overwhelming support, and my past deputy city clerk Sarah Bunting, who has now returned as your official city clerk, for her dedication as well. Also, thanks to admin services director Douglasio and IT manager Neil Snedeker, for without their support, we couldn't do as many of the programs as we've done to continually provide transparency of local government. So it's really exciting that after hundreds of council meetings, and being here from the call to order to some of those really long meetings and very late adjournments, tonight's the first night where I have the ability that I get to go home when I want to.[394.34][394.34](laughter) But thank you again, I wish you all well.[397.02][397.02](applause)
I think I speak on behalf of the entire council, and it truly has been a privilege and honor to work with you. You've done remarkable work, and thank you so much. Anybody else want to make a few comments?
Yeah, I'd like to, as a relatively newbie up here, I ought to say that from the very first day that I met Susan, when I decided to run for city council, she's been extremely helpful and professional right from the get-go, and it's been a pleasure getting to know you and working with you. I wish you all the best, and enjoy those grandkids, because I enjoy mine a lot.[442.81][442.81](laughter)
Well, I'm not going to add much more to that, only that you make running a campaign a complete moment of ease for those of us who are not comfortable in those things here. And I appreciate it, I hope you get a chance to go do some camping and hiking, and I expect to hear from you. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, Susan, I was timing you, that was a minute and two seconds, just in case.[467.55][467.55](laughter) So if you were going over three, I wanted to buzz you on your, no. But it's been a pleasure. Susan and I were coworkers in San Armon before she moved over here to Livermore, so when I was sworn in for the planning commission, I remember just starting that oath, that, you know, kind of complicated and defend the Constitution oath, and just looking at Susan and almost starting to laugh, because I remember her from San Armon, and it was just like, oh, please don't laugh and swear me in, but she just led me through it, and I think everybody who's ever been sworn in in front of a large crowd really appreciates how Susan just very calmly takes you through it, tries to calm you down beforehand, and really appreciate it. It was a pleasure working with you, especially, again, filling out all the paperwork for running for office. People really don't realize the role that the city clerk plays in that, and how she took a lot of time going over and over my often repetitive and nonsensical questions. So, thank you very much, Susan.
I'll just add a little bit to what everybody else has said, I certainly second what they've said, and this is my eighth year working with Susan, and it's, they were all wonderful, and this job is not easy at times, there's a lot to think through, and I've always relied on Susan to keep me in line and tell me what I should do. So, as John said, she does run the city, or has, really thoroughly and very well. So I really appreciated the interaction over the years, and I'll be sorry to see you go.
We wish you all the best. Thank you. We have another proclamation declaring May 2018 as Lupus Awareness Month. I believe Shameka Marti is here. Shameka Marti here? Oh, there you are, okay. Sorry, did I butcher your name? I'm sorry. Okay, just a little bit, okay. So this is proclaiming Lupus Awareness Month, and whereas lupus is a chronic autoimmune disease that causes inflammation of various parts of the body, particularly the skin, heart, joints, and kidneys, and while lupus is not infectious, rare, or cancerous, it affects more people than cerebral palsy, multiple sclerosis, sickle cell anemia, and cystic fibrosis combined. And whereas more than 5 million people worldwide suffer from the devastating effects of lupus, and each year another 100,000 men, women, and children will be diagnosed with this disease, and it is two to three times more prevalent among people of color, including African Americans, Hispanics, Asians, and Native Americans, whereas lupus research shows that one and a half million Americans have been diagnosed with lupus, and although lupus ranges from mild to life-threatening, and thousands of Americans who have lupus die each year, the majority of cases can be managed with proper treatment. And whereas lupus impacts more than just the life of the patient, it affects the patient's family, friends, coworkers, employers, and community, and early diagnosis and proper treatment are critical to the improvements of the quality of life and survival rate of lupus sufferers. And whereas the Lupus Foundation of Northern California, serving California from Santa Cruz to the Oregon border, was founded as a nonprofit organization to alleviate suffering for lupus patients through Patient and Family Services, to achieve early dedication of undiagnosed cases through awareness, promotion, and achieve the eradication of lupus by supporting lupus research. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Livermore proclaims May 2018 as Lupus Awareness Month, and extends heartfelt wishes to the Lupus Foundation of Northern California
Thank you so much. There's a lot of people, such as myself, that suffer in silence because we don't look the part of being handicapped. So even for myself, I have five different autoimmune diseases, but I look perfectly fine. So I'd like to thank the city of Livermore on behalf of the Northern California Lupus Foundation for acknowledging that there are people out there that struggle each and every day. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next on the docket, Darren Lowndes, the executive director of the Housing Consortium of the East Bay. Oh, there you are. And this is proclamation proclaiming the 22nd Annual East Bay Affordable Housing Week, and anybody that's paying attention knows that that's become a crisis in the Bay Area. So whereas the city of Livermore has a commitment through its Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and Housing First Program to creating new, permanently affordable homes for families, seniors, veterans, persons who are experiencing homelessness, persons with disabilities, and to preserving existing housing which helps residents and the Livermore workforce maintain community roots. And whereas the city of Livermore continues to work with a variety of nonprofit developers, community organizations, and faith-based groups such as Bay Area Community Services, Eden Housing, Interfaith Housing, Habitat for Humanity, Housing Consortium of the East Bay, Mid-Penn Housing, Satellite Affordable Housing Associates, Sunflower Hill, Tri-Valley Reach, and Tri-Valley Haven, to build inclusive communities by providing shelter, homes, and support for affordable housing, and housing those with special needs. Whereas local jurisdictions such as the city of Livermore play an important role by raising local resources for affordable housing to leverage federal, state, and other funds. And whereas recognizing the need for affordable housing, the city of Livermore City Council adopted Resolution 2018-014, supporting California State Bill 3, Bell, the Veterans and Affordable Housing Bond Act, on November 6, 2018 ballot coming up this year. This $4 billion bond will provide much-needed funding to support important affordable housing projects, including those in the city of Livermore, and encourage housing construction statewide. And whereas EBHO, the East Bay Housing Organizations, has organized Affordable Housing Week for 22 years, and will feature 15 events acknowledging the need for and the benefits of affordable housing. Now therefore, the city of Livermore supports EBHO's mission to protect, preserve, and create affordable housing opportunities, and hereby proclaims May 10th through the 20th, 2018, as the 22nd East Bay Annual Affordable Housing Week in Livermore. And by the list of all those community groups working to affordable housing, you can tell there's a tremendous effort to solve this. So with that, I presume the proclamation.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Marchand, and council members. As mentioned, my name is Darren Lowndes, I am here as the executive director of the Housing Consortium of the East Bay, but I'm also a very proud member of EBHO, East Bay Housing Organizations. EBHO is a 33-year-old, 500-member nonprofit working to preserve and create affordable housing through education, advocacy, organizing, and coalition building. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for recognizing Affordable Housing Week, and for your commitment to affordable housing from, I'm sorry, period. From May 10th through 20th, our members have organized 15 events in eight East Bay cities to raise awareness about the housing crisis and to demonstrate the solutions that work when community leaders, nonprofits, and local government come together. This year's events include tours, grand openings, and community conversations that highlight this year's theme of building communities, building power. My organization will be participating in the Tri-Valley Affordable Housing Tour this Thursday. HCB will host tour participants at the Vineyard Development Site on North Livermore Avenue, and we hope to see you there, I hope you can join us. We chose building communities, building power as this year's theme to highlight our collective efforts towards building a movement that values housing as a human right. We believe that housing is the foundation for stability, dignity, and success. Now more than ever, community leaders, organizations, and local leaders need to be united to ensure that everyone has a safe, affordable place to call home. There are many opportunities for local leadership in affordable housing, and the funding and land use decisions you make pave the way for equitable housing development that keeps communities healthy and vibrant. I sincerely appreciate the city of Livermore's leadership on this issue, and as you mentioned, all the organizations that the city has and continues to work with to create affordable housing, it's a tribute to your community for what you have been able to accomplish and what is on the boards and to be built soon. I invite the mayor and city council members to participate in the Affordable Housing Week events, and hope to see you this Thursday. On behalf of HCB and EBHO's membership, thank you very much for this honor. Good night.
Next, something that's near and dear to my heart. Many of you know that before I got involved in politics, I did legitimate work as a water quality chemist. So this coming up is the Drinking Water Awareness Month of May 2018. I will be presenting this to our Public Works Director Darren Greenwood. So whereas the city of Livermore is a technology hub and academically engaged community, Livermore's arts, culture, western heritage, and vibrant wine industry provide a unique blend to this special community. Water is our most valuable resource, and as I often say, life is the most fundamental compound for life to exist. Life can exist without oxygen, it can exist without light, but it cannot exist without water. Whereas only tap water provides public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas the values of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth, and diversity, productivity, public health, and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water. And whereas we all must be stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend, and we applaud the dedication of our educators and advocates, and call for business and community leaders to continue to broaden and strengthen their water conservation focus. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Livermore proclaims May 2018 as Drinking Water Awareness Month, and encourages residents to help protect our source waters from pollution to practice water conservation and to get involved in local water issues. Mr. Greenwood? Yep, there he is.[1218.83][1218.83](applause)
Mayor, if I could, I'm going to introduce a new staff and water resources. This is Angela Sipp, who's an outreach coordinator for the city, outreach specialist. So she'll go ahead and accept since she did all the work on the poster contest this year.[1236.74][1236.74](applause)
This is my first year with the city of Livermore, and I've learned so much about water since I've been working here, and this is why I thought it was so important to make this a proclamation. Water is something we take for granted every day. We have it every day, all day, and we need to definitely conserve not just to save money, but to save water. And hopefully this month, and moving forward, we can provide the residents of Livermore and the community with information about how they can do that in their everyday life, as well as the intricate water system that provides us water to also appreciate and protect it as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our final proclamation is proclaiming Tuberculosis Complex Global Awareness Day. We have Jennifer Yaman's and Dorothy Tebbit's, and their families are here. So whereas Tuberculosis Complex, or TSC, is often a devastating disorder that causes tumors to form in vital organs, including the brain, heart, kidneys, skin, liver, and lungs, and is the leading genetic cause of both epilepsy and autism, whereas an estimated 50,000 Americans and 1 million people worldwide have been diagnosed with Tuberculosis Complex, a genetic disease with no cure. And whereas Tuberculosis Complex affects some people severely, and others so mildly it often goes undiagnosed. And whereas the incidence of TSC is as common as Lou Gehrig's disease, ALS, and cystic fibrosis, so increased awareness is vital. Whereas the Tuberculosis Sclerosis Alliance and other groups around the world have joined together to promote awareness of the disorder, to ensure people with TSC get the best possible treatment and proper diagnosis. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Livermore proclaims May 15th, 2018, as Tuberculosis Sclerosis Complex Global Awareness Day, and urges residents to support this research for a cure, and assist those individuals and families who deal with this challenging disease on daily basis. With that, to Jennifer Yaman's, wearing another of many hats, and Dorothy Tebbit's and their
Thank you, I'm Jennifer Yaman's, and I am the co-chair of the Tuberculosis Sclerosis Alliance of Northern California. I know you're ready to get on with the rest of your agenda, so I just want to remark that, you know, we come to raise awareness not to improve the lives of those of us who deal with this challenging disease every day, but because of the research that is unlocking the mysteries of much more common diseases like cancer and epilepsy and autism that are affecting millions of American families. So we raise awareness not just to improve the lives of our own families, but hopefully one day yours too. Thank you.
Okay, next we have the presentation of the Water Awareness Month Poster Contest winners. This is some of the fun stuff that we get to do. So we had some remarkable artwork that came through, and, let's see here, so we have the, let me get this in the right order. Yes, we are, okay. So with that, the city of Livermore Water Utility and California Water Service have sponsored the 2018 Water Awareness Poster Contest for 3rd through 5th grade students with the Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District. The theme for this year's poster contest is Protect the Source, with an emphasis on protecting our drinking water sources. The key elements that the poster winners illustrate is showing how the community can help in protecting and preserving our drinking water sources. The awareness poster contest helps remind students about the importance of water, and how to be good stewards for the environment as well. Winners of the contest receive a certificate of award, a tee-shirt showing their artwork, and a gift card in the following amounts. First place, $100; second place is $50; and third place, $25. Their artwork will be displayed at the 2018 Livermore Wine Country Downtown Street Festival, that's this coming weekend, May 19th and 20th, and in the Civic Center Library Teen Section. The students and their classmates will also be treated to an ice cream party. Yay. So with that, let me, oh, this is, okay, so what did the, we...[1588.63][1588.63](pause) Are we live? Yes, we are, okay, great. Okay, so the city of water, or city of Livermore Water Awards, first to Shriya Badra, her She's got the gift cards.[1638.86][1638.86](pause) The second place is Bryce Willis, teacher is Corinne Kalustian from Altamont Creek School.[1666.11][1666.11](applause) I see a pattern here. School, Altamont Creek School again. Okay, and the Cal Water Awards, this is from Emma Smith School, Anna Lim, her teacher is Mrs. Marshand. And what have we here?
We have these bookmarks. I stippled the otter, I painted it, and then stippling is just a technique, and it's just all little dots, and then these bookmarks are for kids. I want to educate kids to learn more about sea otters.
That's awesome.[1782.24][1782.24](applause) So, these are bookmarks that Anna designed, she painted these, designed them, and did an art technique called stippling. And so she's donating these to... And so she's donating these to the city. Well, great. Well, thank you very much. We can hand those off? Those are great. Have to put some of those in the library. Next, we have from Rancho Las Pecitas School, teacher Mr. Worth, Riley Kirsch. And finally, also from Rancho Las Pecitas School, Marcus Montano, Mr. Worth. A gift card? Okay, we're in business. And with that, we actually have one, thank you very much, everybody. We actually have one more presentation that we received, and I figured I'd hold this now instead of waiting until the end. But we received a proclamation, or a certificate of recognition, from Catherine Baker, our Assemblywoman. This is a certificate of recognition as Outstanding Community Award in recognition of earning the Outstanding Community Award from the Twin Valley District of the Boy Scouts of America. So we received the Twin Valley District Community Partner of the Year Award from the Boy Scouts of America. That was at their dinner event last weekend, so very cool. It actually recognizes the tremendous support that the community and the City of Livermore provides for the scouting throughout the area. So very proud to accept that on behalf of the city as the inaugural recipient of the Community Partner of the Year. So, well done, everybody. We have an Eagle Scout here, and again, showing the commitment for the city. And with that, we go to the advisory body appointments. I need a motion to approve the following appointments of Elizabeth Beeler McWhorter and Nicole Sardella.
Also move.
All second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. So I'd like to call Elizabeth Beeler McWhorter and Nicole Sardella to be sworn in.
Hi, Elizabeth Beeler McWhorter. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies, foreign, and domestic. That I will bear truthfully allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
All right, so we've gotten through that. Onto the Citizens Forum. These are items which are not on the agenda. The City Council can neither deliberate nor take action on any of these. We do have, I've got 17 cards. We've got a lot of stuff going on tonight, so we will take Citizens Forum comments for a half hour, and then we will get on with the business of the council, and then at the end of the public hearings, they will reopen the Citizens Forum and have the comments at that point, okay? So the ones, anything we don't get within the first 30 minutes, we will continue on after the public hearings. So with that, Dave McGuigan, Michael Murphy, Patricia Monroe.
Does anyone else appreciate the irony of the next meeting that you have after I discuss the ethics of the Livermore Police? It is a special workshop for ethics training. I'm wondering what people thought about this workshop. I'm sure most people would think, well, training to help ensure ethical behavior is a good thing, and they'd be right, and that's why the state passed AB 1234 in 2005. It requires all local officials to receive this training. What most people probably don't realize is that you're required to take this training shortly after your election slash appointment, which I'm pretty sure everyone already has done, because the course is offered conveniently online, so everyone can take it at their earliest opportunity. So it's not quite correct to call this ethics training. It's more appropriate to call this ethics retraining, and the only reason you have to bring everybody together to do it is because the district attorney requires you. Of course, the fact that there are ethics issues in Livermore should surprise no one. Mayor Marshand's fawning support for that god-awful Lanier project already had people asking just what you're being promised on the back end to support such an abortion. Adding to your willful lying to the public, colluding with the police chief to conceal the crimes committed by your officers, and your deliberate interference in criminal prosecutions, it's clear that ethics are not your strong suit. Okay, quick test. Who here really believes it took one of Livermore's highly-trained officers 40 minutes to get to talking to the only driver in a single-car accident that the officer directly observed? See, that's the problem. You know the officer committed perjury, and you condone it. And that's why it's pretty clear the ethics trainings this time will be no more effective than the last time you had the training. For you, it's like trying to teach calculus to a kindergartner. You're just missing too many fundamental concepts to get any value from the training. It's very apparent that your parents failed in their responsibility to give you the basic building blocks for ethical behavior. I suggest you have a long talk with your spiritual advisor about the basics of right and wrong and the value of telling the truth. Perhaps after that, you can reflect back on your multiple ethics training sessions and actually appreciate the intent of the content.
Michael Murphy, Patricia Monroe, Jerry Vatoune.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. I'm here to request that the City of Livermore help stop the 100,000 cubic yard excavation of the Oak Grove Nature Reserve that's planned in the Zone 7 project, the Arroyo Mocho Maderos Project R 3.3. This project affects a region of the Arroyo Mocho south of the bike path between Arroyo Road and Home Street, as well as the Oak Grove Nature Reserve area that's located north of the bike path. There are several aspects of the project I want to point out to the city. First, the project is inconsistent with the Oak Grove Nature Reserve Master Plan that was approved by the City Council on October 10, 2005, by then-Mayor Marshall Camina and council members Ritter, Beeman, Dietrich, and Leder. Second, there are portions of the Arroyo Mocho project that are also inconsistent with the Zone 7 Stream Management Master Plan. The Zone 7 Master Plan has no project work described for the region north of the bike path between Arroyo Road and Homes. As such, the excavation work planned in the Oak Grove Nature Reserve is not really covered by the SMMP. Third, the project work that Zone 7 has planned in the Oak Grove Nature Reserve will require the excavation of 100,000 cubic yards of sand and gravel in order to create a flood attenuation basin north side of the bike path. It would effectively create a large quarry in the middle of Livermore. The 100,000 cubic yards of sand and gravel require 6,250 dump trucks being loaded to remove the material, and that is six dump truck entry or exits per hour on College Avenue during the 270-day excavation, according to Zone 7. There will be lots of noise, dust in the air, and gravel on College Avenue during this period. Additionally, they plan to remove 60 mature almond trees in the Oak Grove Nature Reserve. Fourth, I've talked to David Lunn, a retired Zone 7 engineer. He stated during a public meeting held on February 13 at Zone 7 that this project will not reduce the likelihood of downstream flooding during the 100-year flood, if that's to come. And Zone 7 agreed with his assessment that it was correct during that public meeting. Finally, I don't want the citizens of Livermore wondering a year from now how it is that Zone 7 was allowed to excavate and destroy the Oak Grove Nature Reserve. It really doesn't solve any problem. In summary, I request that the City Council recommend to Zone 7 that excavation of the OGNR be eliminated from the Arroyo Mocho project, and that the project be confined to the south side of the bike path as described in their master plan. So if anybody has any questions, they can email OGNR2018@gmail.com, and I'll send more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Monroe, Jerry Vatoune, Anju Bala.
Good evening, Mayor Marshand, City Council members, and especially city staff. Over the past 10 weeks, I've had the fortunate experience of participating in Livermore's Key to the City program. The program takes a cohort of two dozen residents through a 10-week-long weekly program that explores every aspect of city government. I think every aspect. Felt like every aspect. Running a city is an exercise in invisibility. When a city functions well, no one pays attention. It's only when there are problems that people notice and complain, usually vociferously. For most of us, the hard work of running a city remains invisible. Key to the City made the invisible work visible, understandable, and really, really interesting. We learned about the organization of City Hall. We experienced the hard choices of budgeting when we had to cooperate with others to design our own city budget, and then do it again with a twist. We learned about the switch and innovation, about the airports and its importance to the city. I really had no idea we were one of the top 100 airports in the country. We toured the maintenance yards, learned about emergency preparedness, homeless, housing and homelessness, and city planning. We were given a virtual tour of Livermore art. We learned about the dragon at the library, and if you don't know what the dragon is, ask. And we got to tour the water, aka sewage plant. And finally, I thought that was really cool. And finally, we climbed four stories up a fire truck ladder, and we operated the fire hose, which really has a kick. Each week, we heard from several people representing the particular department. Probably 50 people in all. I was truly impressed by the passion and pride each person took in the work they do in ensuring the city functions smoothly most of the time. I thought I had appreciated the work done to run a city. I had no idea. The women and men who work for Livermore are truly public servants, and I appreciate the opportunity to have met them and learned about what they do to ensure that the invisible work of running the city remains invisible most of the time. I want to thank all who gave their time and knowledge to our class, and most especially to Susan Neer, Jean Bell, and Helena Graves for being our shepherd through the program.
Thank you. Jerry Vatoune, Anju Bala, Greg Scott.
Good evening. I'd like to follow up what Mike Murphy said on the Arroyo Mocho Maderos Reach Flood Plan and Repairing Thing, or as I call it, from park to quarry. Zone 7 wants to start quarrying operations to scrape up 100,000 cubic yards of gravel from 15-acre city park area, the proposed oak reserve bounded by Home Street Bridge and extending towards the College Avenue. This operation will lower the level of this land by some 10 feet. In essence, what this plan is, will do is establish an industrial zone right in the middle of the city. The bike path will then be breached to allow floodwater to enter this deepened area. The project expects to protect the Home Street Bridge from 100-year flood, since the last water flood event clogged the bridge with tree limbs and deposited gravel in front of it. All this gravel would be, that they're going to dredge, will be carried by dump trucks onto College and then down to Stanley. As a result of this operation, neighborhoods on three sides of the excavation will suffer from incessant noise from bulldozers and scraper for one whole year. College Boulevard and Stanley will become a parade of gravel trucks leaving the quarry every 20 minutes, it's estimated, disrupting rush-hour traffic for one year. And with the gravel trucks comes cracked windshields, as we all know. These consequences are somewhat appalling for the benefit accrued. In summary, the project focuses on one issue with a sledgehammer approach. The original flood control proposal looked to multiple solutions for multiple problems, such as clearing the bridge of debris during a storm and things of that sort. This approach had much less collateral damage. We urge the City of Livermore to oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anju Bala, Greg Scott, Connie Prebe.
Dear Mayor and council members, I am Anju Bala and represent Brahma Kumari Silicon Valley Center at City of Malpitas. Brahma Kumari's Silicon Valley Center is associated with BK World Spiritual Organization based in India. It has a worldwide network of over 9,000 learning and retreat centers spread over 110 countries with millions of members. It is dedicated to a transformation of individual and society through the study and spiritual practice of Raj Yoga meditation. We are here to invite you to a free event being organized by our center in honor of Sister Shivani, who is visiting Silicon Valley for the first time on June 2nd and 3rd next month. Sister Shivani is a great motivational speaker, a well-known TV personality, and a worthy woman of the decade. Millions of people around the world have benefited from her talks in their day-to-day lives. Details of the events are presented in this flyer. Sister Shivani will be talking on four different topics at two locations, Santa Clara Convention Center and San Ramon Marriott, and we expect about 7,000 people to attend. Registrations are filling up fast, and request you to register soonest. We request you all to take advantage of her visit to Silicon Valley and benefit from her talks during the two days and bring the changes to your lives. It is a free event. We would also personally like to invite Mayor John Marchand and all the council members to, as our guest of honor for these events. A personal invitation has been sent from our center, and hope you all have it, have received the same. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to share the event with the community at Livermore. I would like to leave a few flyers with the city clerk and for distribution at a later time, so I actually already left it outside, if somebody's interested. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Marshand, Livermore City Council, and City of Livermore staff. Hello also to those of you listening on live or recorded video, and to those and attendants in this room. I would like to thank those of you in video land and those in this room for participating in your governance. For governance by power and by moneyed power is having difficulty with the challenges we face and needs more input from you all. If all you all can do is what you are doing now, I thank you. I encourage you to keep it up. If you can participate more, I encourage that also. The status quo is not working for many. The system is broken, and too many are falling off the edge. If you speak to this even while offering solutions, powerful will say you are negative. If you read and observe and present sound facts, your facts may be trivialized. This is telling in who is listening and in who is not. You may even be accused of pontificating and hijacking the process if you have staged. There is, this is more ego delusion by power, for we all, powerful and powerless alike, are the process. What kind of process is it if it is so easily hijacked? There are those of you that feel apathetic. Apathy is a forfeiture of any say on your destiny. There are those of you that think and/or say that nothing can be done or said to change anything. I contend that those of you that think or say this are wrong. With unabashed self-flattery, I say the City of Livermore is listening to me on the homeless issue in Livermore. It has realized there must be changes. While it is noble to change one or a few lives, what about the many? In the last year of his life, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. wrestled with the question, quote, "Where do we go from here, chaos or community?" Unquote. quote, "Where do we go from here, chaos or community?" Status report on the homeless in Livermore? They are rotting mentally and physically. They are rotting sleeping in the concrete alcoves of downtown Livermore, in the royals of Zone 7 water conveyance, in the bushes in the parks of the Livermore area parks and recreation district, and in their cars. The homeless are relatively propertyless, however, they share the rotting experience with property-shut-in elderly who are trying to hang on but get no food from Friday to Monday because of the inadequate funding for Spectrum and the Meals on Wheels program. Chaos or community? $17 million for the Vineyard Project to house 24 or 25 homeless? What about the other homeless? And we cannot even fully fund the Meals on Wheels program over the weekend? We have a simple choice here. We can be Renaissance, that is, rebirth in our approach to solving our challenges, or we can be dopes toward the challenges.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Connie Prebe, Michelle Gallegos, Dawn.
My name is Connie Prebe and I live on Rainflower Drive. The first thing I want to do is I want to show you a postcard that I got that was post-stamped in 1967. It's very small, so I brought a bigger picture, which shows the Springtown Duck Pond back in 1966, actually. And on the back of the card, it says, "A magnificent sight, day or night, is the spectacular 40-foot fountain in the sparkling lagoon at Springtown." And then it goes on. Next, I want to read the public opinion petition that I have started. It's a petition to save the Springtown ponds and wildlife. While developing the open space plan to renovate the old Springtown Gulf Coast property, the city of Livermore has not been very transparent with the residents about plans to replace the duck pond with a skateboard park. The city has also been neglecting pond maintenance, which has led to animal diseases and contaminations for the past years. We are protesting the pond removal and neglect of proper treatment of pond habitat and wildlife, and we believe a well-maintained duck pond, which is a staple landmark for over 50 years in Springtown, to be a much more valuable asset to our neighborhood than a noisy skate park at that particular location. We, the undersigned, are concerned citizens who urge our leaders to act now and help us save the ponds and the wildlife. And I have 300 signatures already collected, but just a couple of folks, and for lack of time, really without trying very hard, so get ready for this number to drastically increase. We also have an online petition. We had to retract the statement that was originally made and turned out to be a misunderstanding to, due to miscommunication between residents and city officials. The petition verbiage is now accurate, and the signatures are valid, as everyone was informed of the update and had the option to delete their signature if they wanted. This petition now has over 1,500 signatures. Many local residents made comments. Some of those will be read later tonight. What I'm about to read next is a test, text message exchange between one of my neighbors and myself, and this was his response to me when I asked if he would sign our petition. Neighbor says, "I have to be honest. I've lived in Springtown since 1994, and I think the pond is now disgusting. At one time, it was just ducks, and it was nice, but eventually it got so gross, you couldn't even walk by without stepping in poop, and the smell is nasty. Hope I don't offend, but I'm not in the camp of keeping it. I do greatly care what they do with the wildlife. I hope they moved them to all safe places." My response, "Well, that's exactly our point, though. In the recent years, it's been neglected by the city who owns that land. If it was properly maintained, if there was educational signage installed informing of pond habitat and life, wildlife and their proper diet..."
If you could please finish your thought.
Okay. Basically, a bunch of solutions that I presented, as you know, in my email to you as well, that I never got a response to.
I'm still waiting for a response from Southern California, so thank you very much.
Okay. Well, his reply after several hours was, "Okay, I signed it based on the points you made."
Thank you. Michelle Gallegos, Dawn, Dennis Gams.
Good evening. My name is Michelle. I'm a North Livermore homeowner. Mayor and city council, can you please help us save our pond and wildlife? Once residents protested, the city agreed to take no action at the pond until the migratory chicks were fine and hatchlings could fly. The bulldozers and dump trucks are interfering with the pond wildlife and its natural environment. It's affecting and enclosing all wildlife with fencing, and it's interfering with the wild animal habitat. The city of Livermore Public Works and new mayor have created a situation where ducks and other animals have been displaced and killed. After we were told the environment would be respected, why didn't the process wait? Side note, Public Works D. Greenwood, "You need to start by protecting and preserving precious water in your own backyard. At 6:00 PM this evening, the lawn sprinkler system is on right now at the vacant library fenced in area running down the street and sidewalk into the gutter. Precious drinking water rushing down the drain. And a body of freestanding water is in the construction site right now. What a joke. I will email my pictures to you, Mayor."
Please.
Here are a few statements from our Springtown Pond online petition. "The total disregard for the wildlife at this pond, at this pond is beyond unacceptable. As a resident that live near the pond, I am disgusted by how this project is being handled. The complete lack of compassion for the animals is appalling." It's, number, another one. "It's disheartening to think my home city would do such a thing. All animals deserve a voice. We are their voice. For crying out loud, have some compassion for wildlife and precious ecosystems in our backyards and community. Please preserve the precious wildlife diversity for existing and future generations and stop the suffering these animals are enduring." I'm lost for, the new one. "I'm lost for words why such a horrible act is being done to our beloved Springtown ponds. I'm an animal lover and raised my two boys, taking them here for 23 years. All I can say is how sad this has become. Shame on all the people who voted for this to happen." A new one. "We're always stopping at the pond to enjoy the beautiful animals around it. It is definitely an integral part of Springtown. Please don't disrupt homes of these animals." A new one. "Do not kill the wildlife that lives in the area and around Springtown Pond. Do what you claimed you would do." New one. "Our animals deserve to live and have their home to stay intact. I am watching mother ducks dodging bulldozers and dirt trucks almost running over them, and the city does not care. They are the ones doing this. Please support the Springtown cause." Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council and Mayor, can you please help us save the pond and Springtown wildlife?
Thank you. As I said, this is the citizens' forum. We cannot deliberate nor discuss at this time. Dawn, Dennis Gams, Evan Branning.
I'm going to pass.
Dawn? Okay, thank you. Dennis Gams, Evan Branning.
Good evening, John Marchand, Mayor Marchand, I should say, and members of the city council. My name is Dennis Gams. I'm a civil engineer and I'm a former water resources manager for the Zone 7 agency, where I worked for over 30 years, and now I'm a candidate for the Zone 7 board. Recently, we had a drought that was a wake-up call. We have flow restrictions in the Delta. That's where we get 80% of our water. So in seeking new water, Zone 7 and the valley should be looking to diversify its sources. I think increased use of recycled water is a good candidate to be considering. Over the last three years, Zone 7 raised its water rates 40%, and this was done without a serious look at cost and deferral of capital projects by the public or with their input. And I think that that is something that needs to be done by Zone 7, is looking to work more with the public when they make their decisions. And I've heard a couple of comments tonight. First of all, it was nice that, timing for me, that this was Water Awareness Month, and I think that the proclamation did a great job in describing how important water is and how we take it for granted. And that recent drought was an example where nobody knew that there was flow restrictions, and so we got that reminder because of that. Also, there's a few speakers that mentioned a project Zone 7 is proposing now, and I guess the EIR is currently out on that, and that's where they're considering constructing a basin. And the purpose, the stated purpose is a reduction in flood control, not a reduction, a reduction in flooding. And it says it attenuates the flood, but it doesn't attenuate the peak 100-year flood, as I understand it. Essentially, that's not a flood control benefit. And for $6.5 million, I think that our monies should serve a better purpose, and I certainly encourage the city, you know, discussing that with Zone 7. Should I be a board member? I certainly would be discussing that, but it certainly is also insult to injury if it's really not providing the flood control benefit you need and is causing dust and noise problems. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Gams. Evan Branning, and that just about takes us up to 30 minutes, but let's see where it goes.
Good evening, council staff. My name is Evan Branning, and I'm speaking on my own behalf right now. I want to start, actually, by thanking Susan Neer and congratulating her on her retirement. She has been an amazing service to the city. She's helped me personally, as well as I'm sure many of the people in this room. And I'd also like to congratulate Nicole and Elizabeth on their appointments to commissions and recommend, with all the activity, energy, and excitement we have in the city, that everyone who does want to get more involved, step up, join a commission. It's a great way to get more involved in the city politics. With that, the topic I wanted to talk about today is, I've been hearing a lot in the newspaper, I've been hearing from people, that they're concerned about whether or not the city is listening. And I'm here to say that the problem with listening right now falls on everyone's shoulders. We're all hyped, built up, and really upset about different things in the city. We can come out and we can let our passions overtake us. However, in my experience, the city, the city council, the planning commission, all of the different commissions have been very receptive to public comment. Last week, when Steve Dunbar came and spoke about the bike path, there was a lively discussion with a delay of two weeks on the project. He was able to speak with staff. They were able to fix many of the problems he had. With the downtown plan, we spent several months speaking to each other, having a conversation, seeing what we could do, and we all came together, and we actually came up with a plan that I believe is the best plan we could come up with. Again, with all of these and many, many, many other examples of city staff, city council, listening to the people, we have an issue where we come out and because it was not exactly what we wanted, wasn't exactly what we said, we can get upset. And the truth is, we need to listen to you as well as you need to listen to us. When we're having this, it is not a one-way conversation. It is a back-and-forth, a dialogue, and all of these are choices that need to be made. When we choose whether or not to build housing downtown, we need to look at the cost, the cost associated if we don't. When we decide how we're going to fix a bike path, we need to look at whether or not it will end up costing the city sometimes millions of dollars for a small change. The duck pond is a perfect example. There is no good solution for it. We need to talk about what we can do and how we can mitigate it best. We can't simply just fill it back up with water and allow the ducks to survive. All of us are in a conversation with our city. All of us here are engaged with you, and you are engaged with us. And I want to thank you for the work that you do, the work that the staff does, and the work that everyone in the city has put forward to help make Livermore the best city possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Branning. Okay, that takes us to half an hour. I still have five cards left, but we really need to get on to the business at hand. So with that, we will consider these after the, we'll reopen the citizens' forum after the consent calendar, after the public hearings. So with that, the names on the list are Heidi Davidson, Roger Logan, Jonas Nitzler, Catherine Myers, John Stein, and Jacob Anderson. So we will sit tight and we'll be back.
I was one of the first people here. I turned in a card and my name is...
The cards were all numbered.
Yeah, but I turned mine in, the very first one, and the city clerk said, "Oh, you'll be the first one." And I don't know what happened.
She's new.
Which agenda item?
It was Agenda Item 5.01.
Oh, we haven't considered that yet.
Oh, okay, so it's not...
No, no, 5.01, that's, that's, that's coming up. That comes after four.
My apologies.
No worries, no worries. Okay, so, oh, phew, it's not my fault. I always like that. So, okay, so these, okay, so we also have a couple more. We've got, okay, this is, we've got that. Okay, so we, Carl Winty and Felicia Scranton on the open forum, so that will be considered after 5.01. I do have, let's see, four, five, six, okay. Okay, so let's, I have cards for 4.04, 4.05, 4.06. You okay? So, can we wait to 5.01? Okay, so, let me, so we have Director McPartland here from the BART board, and I'd just like to, if you wanted to speak at this point, or, hang on, until after the...
Now, that would be...
Okay.
...what would be an appropriate time, more or less like an introduction.
Okay, so what we're going to do is hold off on the consent calendar. I'm going to slightly reorder the agenda. This will be the first intro into 5.01, the Isabel Neighborhood Plan.
Do you want to do the consent calendar first?
I've got, have a dozen comments on the consent calendar, so this way we can hear you, you can tee it up. We'll go back to the consent calendar, but this way we can get the BART perspective on here and certainly appreciate your long-term support.
John McPartland, BART director, District 5, which includes the Tri-Valley area, and I'm here to speak briefly as an introduction to the Isabel Neighborhood Plan from the BART perspective and congratulate the council on dealing with this issue this evening. I also want to end up thanking all the hard work that city staff has done, and in particular, Bob Vin, and all the work that has gone into getting to this point where you have the opportunity to go ahead and vote on this this evening. The thanks also end up going out to all of the folks that ended up contributing to this, to include the citizens' group, such as the BART to Livermore Coalition, the citizens, the commission that ended up doing the evaluation, that provided you with the recommendations that you have in front of you today, as well as, of course, the council and the mayor. BART pretty much has a partnership with the city in relationship to the Isabel Plan by virtue of the fact that BART is, on the 24th of this month, will be voting on its preference from the standpoint of whether we're going to have full BART, which we, everybody in this room wants to have. I don't think there's anyone in this room that doesn't want to have it, myself included in, in working on that. And the vote that you end up taking this evening is going to be integral for me being able to finish stating my case for full BART to Livermore. Let's see, the stakeholders and the time that has gone into this, we could end up having a start point and an end point as far as the calendar is concerned, but all the stakeholders, not only internally but externally, with the citizens and everyone that I've already mentioned, but the city, the county, the state, as well as the feds that have contributed their time and effort and funds associated with this. So your, your vote this evening is going to end up being critical and key for the vote that I will be providing and working on for the 24th of this month. And I want to thank everyone and all the input that has gone into this, and let's get this done. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Director McPartland. Thank you very much and appreciate your ongoing support. Okay, with that, we're back to the consent calendar. I have four cards on the consent calendar, so what I'd like to do is, we'll pass, let's cover 4.01, 2, and 3. cover 4.01, 2, and 3. I have cards for 04, 05, and 06. So do I have a motion for 4.01, 02, and 03?
Some moved.
Moved by Councilmember Coonburn. Is there a second? Seconded by Vice Mayor Warner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Passed unanimously. Thank you. For, sorry, 4.04, Randy Mancini, 4.04, Mr. Mancini, who's to speak?
Sorry, no comment. I was just here to answer any questions that you guys might have had for the project.
Oh, okay. All right, very good. Well, in that case, do we have a motion for 4.04? Moved by Vice Mayor Warner.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Carling. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Passed unanimously. Very good. Thank you. 4.05, this is a resolution adjusting the Livermore Municipal Airport rates and charges for fiscal year 2018-19. Kathy Chase. Kathy Chase? Oh, there she is. In the back, okay.
I just move slower nowadays.
That's okay.
I spent too many years on my horse, and my knees don't work anymore. I can imagine what theirs are like.
As long as you can reach the ailerons, we're all good.
There we go. I made it. You know, I realize that there's really nothing that I can say or do that's going to change this. Years ago, the airport commission had some say in what happened with the airport rates and everything, but that was taken away under Marshall Camina's administration. So really, we have no clout at all. But I know that our rental rates, our tenant rates for our hangars are going to go up. When we first put our airplane out at Livermore, a tie-down was $39 a month. A hangar was $141 a month. Our hangar is now $384 a month, and it's going to go up. I know of three general aviation pilots and aircraft owners who have left the Livermore Airport. Now, that will make all of you happy because there is a waiting list for hangars, but every single one of these people has moved out of the state of California because of the costs of everything that happens here. And our airport is no different. There's going to come a point where the general aviation enthusiast can no longer afford this airport, and it's getting close to that point now. You have a lot of businesspeople that have very expensive aircraft that will come in and out, and perhaps they will be happy with that, but there's going to come a point where you're going to have to put the brakes on the automatic renewals and increase of the hangar fees every year. And my husband and I are not immune from that. We are looking to move, and we will move out of the state of California because this is just one more tax, if you will. And the tenants at the Livermore Airport are the ones that pay the bills out there. We are the city's ATM for airport costs, and there comes a breaking point. And I would like for all of you to be aware of that and to keep it in mind as you automatically adjust these prices every year. So thank you much.
Thank you, Ms. Chase. Just a quick question. The airport is an enterprise, is that correct? And the definition of an enterprise?
Yes, the airport is an enterprise. Funds that are raised for the airport stay at the airport, so they do not get transferred to the general fund. Those stay in the airport accounts.
So we're not making any money on that?
The general fund in the general city is not. The city does benefit from taxes raised there, but these fees and charges go to support airport operations.
And that's the only thing they go to?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just wanted a clarification. Thank you. Okay, we now have 4.06. We have Greg Scott and Edie Nells from Sunflower Hill. Mr. Scott.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, City of Livermore staff. For the record, Consent Calendar 4.06, Resolution authorizing the appropriation of Housing and Human Services grant funds utilizing Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnerships Program, Social Opportunity Endowment, Housing and Lou, Housing Services Facility Fee, and General Funds for fiscal year 2018-19 in the estimated amount of $1,024,784. Authorizing up to an additional $100,000 in the event that HUD funding is greater than anticipated and authorizing execution of related grant agreements. How can you do this? The Human Services Commission meeting for May was canceled. We're talking about listening here. We're talking about public input. How can you do this? The Human Services Commission meeting in March didn't even have a quorum? You know, I don't get this. Okay, the first Human Services Commission meeting I went to in January, I called up City Hall asking about it. I didn't know about this Human Services Commission before that. I called up City Hall, they didn't even know what I was talking about. And I did figure out where it is. I missed February, my bad. I got mixed up in the date. Where's the public input on this? Okay, I received a copy in January of the grants. It was changed in the meeting in April, and no meeting in May, and what is supposed to be the public input here? How can you pass a resolution like this? This is a sham. This is a sham. I don't understand this at all. I thought this was by the people, for the people, of the people. I don't know. I don't understand it.
Edie Nells, Sunflower Hill.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Marshawn, city council members, and city staff. Thank you so much for allowing me an opportunity to address you this evening. I wanted to take a moment to introduce myself. My name is Edie Nells. I'm the new executive director of Sunflower Hill. I've been with the organization for just over a month, and what has become very apparent is how grateful we are to our partnership with the city of Livermore and for your support of affordable housing for our gardens at Hagaman Ranch and for our cause. So I just wanted to say thank you. We look forward to continuing our partnership and good work with you.
Thank you. With respect to the Housing and Human Services Grants, I can't speak to what happened to the meeting, but I know that the Human Services Commission does a tremendous amount of work in this community, considering the limited resources that they have and the need to provide resources to a number of agencies that need funding. But unfortunately, we don't have significant funds to go around. So the real key is to be able to provide enough money to make a difference. But as you pointed out, the millions of dollars that are going to go into the Vineyard Project for the 25 homeless individuals, that's, there's a lot of money cobbled together to make that happen. And that's what we need to do, and that's what the Human Services Department does, and that's what the commission works so hard to do. So yes, there's a limited amount of resources, but there's a tremendous amount of effort from a lot of very, very dedicated people that are committed to solve the problems of people that are less fortunate in this community. So they're working very hard. We're constrained by resources. I was recently on a panel on homelessness with Alameda County and found that the county resources, that Livermore has the fourth highest population of unsheltered individuals, and out of the top eight, there are, the funds that the county gives to these cities ranges between $9,000 and $21,000 per homeless individual. The city of Livermore gets $1,600. So we are woefully underfunded compared to the other cities. This is something that I'm going to be addressing, but this is stuff that we've been working on for years, and we will continue to work on it, I promise you. But it comes down to the resources, and we're working to bring in more resources, absolutely. So--
Can I have a question?
Yes.
So this resolution is really about accepting the money, right?
It's about distributing it. Essentially, the process includes--
We accept it and then distribute it.
That is correct. You essentially, your Human Services Commission had three meetings regarding the issue. The first was in early December as a part of staff working with Livermore, Dublin, and Pleasanton, held two workshops for nonprofit and public agencies on the application process. Then essentially, first-time applicant agencies had a meeting on, with the Human Services Commission on February 27th, and essentially, the commission considered this item on April 10th and made their recommendations at that meeting. So that process was similar to how we run these annual processes, and these steps are the ones that are required, and they are making a recommendation to--
So before we could even send it out to any of the needy folks that are here in the city, we have to accept this money first?
Yes.
That's what this resolution's about, right?
You are accepting the money, and then essentially, your item--
Later--
--your item later is to distribute those funds.
Right. That's what I thought. Thanks.
But we can't spend it if we don't accept it. Yeah, that's making your point. Yeah, making your point. Okay, with that, is there a motion for 4.05 and 4.06?
I'm moving to accept 4.05 and 4.06.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, on to the main event, 5.01. This is the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan and the Final Environment Impact Report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. I'm your city manager, Mark Roberts. So this evening, you're going to have a presentation from several of our key staff who have been working on the Isabel Neighborhood Plan over the past several years. You'll recall that you have reviewed the project several different times during that process. And with that, as the staff gets set up here, we're going to start our presentation with Assistant City Manager Bob Vinn, who will kick things off. And with that, I will turn it over to Bob.
Thank you, Mark, very much.
I'm sorry for the demotion. He's actually our Assistant City Engineer. That was not a nice thing to do to you, change your title.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn, members of the council. I am Bob Vinn, Assistant City Engineer, and the Isabel Neighborhood Plan team is pleased to be here yet again to talk about the Isabel Neighborhood Plan and ask you to adopt it and the associated resolutions and ordinances. So with me tonight, I have Steve Riley, Principal Planner, Lori Parks, Associate Planner, Ashley McBride is an Assistant Planner, and we are the Isabel team for the city. We have a couple of our key members of our consultant team here as well. We have Monica Sidlick from the firm of Diet and Bacha that helped us prepare the plan and the environmental impact report. And we have Miranda Thompson--
Mead and Hunt.
--from Mead and Hunt. She is an airport and aviation consultant, and they helped us with the airport issues. And we also have a couple of members from BART. Director McPartland, you heard earlier. We have Andrew Tang in the audience.
He's outside.
Oh, he's outside at the moment, but he's the project manager on the BART to Livermore extension, and if you have questions of him, I'm sure he'd be happy to field them. And Erlene DeMarcus, former BART director, is a consultant working on the project for BART. So with that, tonight, our agenda. There we go. I'm going to give a little bit of project background. When I get through that, I'll turn it over to Lori, and she will talk about the meat of the Isabel Specific Plan. And then Steve's going to finish up talking about some of the key policy changes that are proposed. So the BART to Livermore Extension Project that BART has, is working on, is a 5.5-mile extension down the median of I-580 to a station just east of the Isabel Avenue interchange. The project also includes enhanced bus connections throughout the rest of the community to key destinations like downtown, the Transit Center, the Labs, Las Pecitas College, to name a few. BART also is looking at alternatives to conventional BART. They are looking at a diesel multiple unit or electric multiple unit rail technology. They are also looking at two bus alternatives. So BART released their draft Environmental Impact Report on the project in the middle of last year, and they recently released the final Environmental Impact Report just last week on the project. And as Director McPartland mentioned, they are scheduled to take action on the project on May 24th. They've been holding a series of informational meetings on the project over the last few months. The next steps in the BART project is to do federal environmental and work on a full funding plan, design, and so on. With revenue service, we could see at the earliest in 2026. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lori to go over the Isabel Neighborhood Plan.
Good evening. The city is preparing the Isabel Neighborhood Plan to guide development in the area surrounding the future BART station. The BART station would be located in the center of the circle here, which represents a half-mile radius of the station, and the planning area is outlined in black and the city limits in pink for context. Here is a more zoomed-in view of the planning area with a proposed station and half-mile radius. The half-mile radius is considered the reasonable walking distance from a rail station and has been the focus of our planning efforts. The planning area includes Las Pecitas College and is adjacent to the municipal airport. The planning area is entirely within the urban growth boundary and includes some vacant land near the station. The plan will legally function as a specific plan, which is a tool for comprehensively planning for a specific part of the city. In addition, it'll serve as the ridership development plan for BART's purposes and a priority development area plan for regional planning purposes. So having a PDA plan will qualify the area for regional funding for transportation and planning projects. BART and the regional agencies, MTC and ABAG, will consider the Isabel Neighborhood Plan when evaluating the BART to Livermore project. So the first objective of the plan is to create a complete walkable neighborhood with a mix of land uses and amenities, such as a grocery store. It is also a major opportunity to take advantage of the major investment in regional rail to address citywide goals. For example, there is high demand for additional affordable housing options, and the Isabel Neighborhood can accommodate much of this demand. It relocates planned residential growth under the general plan from the Greenville-TOD area to the Isabel Station area. Focusing new development around mass transit is a key strategy for increasing travel options and reducing environmental impacts. The extension and plan also present the opportunity to attract Class A office space to Livermore. The plan process has included five phases since city council directed staff to begin its preparation in late 2014. City council provided additional direction to staff at the end of the alternatives and preferred plan phases. And each phase has involved extensive public outreach, including meetings with residents that live within and adjacent to the station area, as well as with property owners. The vision for the neighborhood includes six key themes. This was established after the first planning phase. Together, these six principles will create a vibrant, walkable, well-designed neighborhood that is compatible with surrounding development and integrates natural areas, community spaces, and amenities. The plan contains these eight chapters. It has a similar structure as other specific plans used in Livermore, including the downtown and South Livermore Valley specific plans. This diagram shows the new zoning designations that would apply to the neighborhood. If adopted, and once the plan goes into full effect, it would replace the existing regulatory framework. The BART station would be located here, in the middle of the freeway, with pedestrian bridges connecting to either side, north and south. And the parking structure would be located on the south side of the freeway along East Arrowway Boulevard. And the main bus connections would be provided along this loop road on the north side of the freeway. This diagram shows the properties most likely to experience development or redevelopment. They include vacant or underutilized lands, as well as properties that received a new land use type or a more intense development intensity. Implementation of the land use plan is owner-initiated, meaning that development or redevelopment will only occur once property owners-- will only occur once property owners submit an application for entitlement. Now, some highlights of the land use plan. First, the red zoning designation allows for neighborhoods serving retail uses such as shops and restaurants. These uses would be located along a new Main Street running north-south through the neighborhood, as well as on a retail center block in this location. So in addition to helping residents meet their daily needs, these areas will provide community gathering spaces. The business park and general commercial categories shown in pinks are similar to the existing zoning that applies to the planning area. The plan would replace the mix of planned development or PD zonings with a cohesive and modern set of standards. The office category, shown in purple, allows for more intense development than the business park designation and is concentrated around the BART station to support Class A office space. There are four residential categories. The transition and village categories, shown in yellows, allow for the development of townhouses, garden-style apartments, and similar housing types. The center and core designations, shown in browns, would generally support the development of multi-story apartments and condominium buildings. So as the name implies, the transition and village housing sites are located around the edge of the planning area, adjacent to existing development, so they would provide a transition to those surrounding uses. And the center and core categories, those sites are found in the middle of the planning area, closest to the BART station, to take advantage of the short walking distance to transit. This table shows the plan's overall capacity for new development. It allows up to 4,095 housing units, new housing units, and about 2.1 million square feet of non-residential development that would support about 9,000 net new jobs. As previously mentioned, the project includes shifting the housing capacity that the general plan set aside for the Greenville TOD area to the Isabel Neighborhood, such that there would be no net increase in planned housing within the city. The plan includes a goal for 25% of the new units to be subsidized at below-market rates. Achieving this goal relies on two main strategies. First, increasing the inclusionary requirement from 15% to 20%. It also involves partnerships with nonprofits to develop standalone affordable projects or mixed-income projects. The plan includes improvements to the street, bicycle, and pedestrian networks to enhance safety, station access, and connectivity. It envisions the construction of multi-use trails, undercrossings, and pedestrian bridges running throughout the neighborhood and connecting to the regional trail system. This map shows how the core area of the neighborhood would be within a short walking distance to and from the BART station. Dark purple shows the five-minute walk, while light purple shows a 10-minute walk on average. The turquoise lines represent the main walking routes through the neighborhood, and they would have enhanced streetscape elements to support a safe and attractive pedestrian environment. The plan calls for three new neighborhood parks that would be centrally located to new residential uses. The trail system will connect the network of parks and open spaces to maximize access to these natural areas. The plan is written to be contingent on approval of a full BART extension to Isabel. If the BART Board selects a different alternative, then staff will have to return to City Council for direction. In addition, the plan includes a phasing program to link land use changes to the progress of the BART to Livermore Extension Project. The intention is to ensure that BART service will be available to serve the highest density uses. So first, if BART approves the extension to Isabel, then Phase 1 would go into effect. Phase 1 includes the business park and commercial zoning designations in the outer areas to replace the mix of PDs or planned developments. It also includes several transition and village sites that are adjacent to existing residential development. And lastly, Phase 1 would allow some Class A office space in this area, as well as the retail center. Phase 2 would go into effect when full funding for the BART extension has been secured and upon completion of a study to relocate the BART line's maintenance yard to an urbanized area. Phase 2 includes the two BART-owned properties shown here. Lastly, Phase 3 would go into effect when construction of the BART extension begins. This phase includes the sites with center or core housing and the remainder of the office sites. So this area outlined in red, and this area down here. So I'll now turn to Steve to describe the proposed policy amendments.
Thanks, Lori, and good evening, Mayor Marchand and members of the City Council. So in order to adopt this plan, the city will have to consider a couple of policy amendments. The first will be to amend the city's airport protection area. The airport protection area, which is shown here on the left slide, the large purple box, was a protection, was a policy that was adopted by the city in 1991 to ensure that residential did not encroach any further onto the airport and to reduce noise and safety impacts. As part of this plan, the city staff and planning commission are recommending that we make an exception, I apologize, an exception in the northeast corner of the airport protection area to allow housing, consistent with what is shown in the Isabel Neighborhood Plan. And staff and the PC are recommending this because to provide housing in that area is, however, consistent with the most recent Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan that was adopted by the County Airport Land Use Commission and adopted in the city's general plan in 2013. And that, the safety zones of that policy are shown here. It's a little bit hard to read, but this is a yellow area. Our housing is in this area of the Safety Zone 6, and that does allow residential development. So it is consistent with that more modern plan, but we would need an amendment from the airport protection area just for that corner. The second policy amendment we are asking the council to consider is to amend the city's scenic corridor policy. As you know, the scenic corridor policy allows views from the hills from I-580 by keeping housing and residential and commercial buildings at a certain height limit, so you can see above those buildings to see the hills. So after careful consideration and early input from the council, commission, and the community, the city staff looked at some key focused areas to ask for scenic corridor amendment, and those areas are shown here in the blue. So they're outlined in blue here. This is what we call a core area. This is the second one called the East Airway. There's a third one called Portola. And we're also asking the council tonight to consider a fourth area, which we call the Gateway Area. And these areas would have defined height limits. Where they'd have an upper limit, and then the rest of the area, that is in gray here, would still be subject to the scenic corridor. These areas were chosen for exceptions because they allow the plan to meet some of its goals, to have some high-density housing in and around the BART station within a half-mile. And they're tucked in as much as possible to the interchange itself, which already blocks significant views as you're driving down I-580. And in fact, there is a scenic corridor amendment currently in our general plan that is roughly sort of semicircle this large. So we're taking that scenic corridor exception and sort of extending it northward for this area here. And again, we would be asking for scenic corridor amendments in the south side and this smaller area on Portola. Staff also has some visual animations we will be showing you to sort of depict how this will look as you're driving down the freeway. So I'm going to go ahead and have Neil start animation number one, and a couple of quick caveats here. You'll see buildings in this animation that are just purely example buildings. They don't represent exactly what will be built, but we put in buildings that have similar sort of business park architecture that you might see in the plan. But again, they're just examples and not real approved projects yet. So what we'll be doing on this first animation is we're driving westbound towards Pleasant and I-580, looking north at about 45 degrees. We're just going under the Portola Overpass. You're seeing the Shea Sage project in the foreground. As you can see, the hills above the rooftops of the Shea Sage project. And we have one area that is just west of Shea Sage that would continue that same approach. Now we're getting closer to the Isabel Interchange, and you're seeing some of the business park and business office core development. And you're seeing now the pedestrian bridge to the BART station going underneath that. Now we're going underneath the Isabel Interchange. And you're seeing a little bit more of the office core development just north of the freeway. And now we're transitioning back into the more typical business park that you see out there today. And this area again would be subject to the current scenic corridor amendment, excuse me, the current scenic corridor policies.
So based on the freeway traffic, that's Sunday morning at 4:00 AM?
Yes. You are in the outside right-hand lane, and now we're just going underneath the Airway Boulevard Interchange. And you'll note on your right, as you pop underneath interchange, you'll see the tops of buildings on the Gateway Site. And those buildings are modeled to represent that exception we're asking for for the Gateway property, which is allowing a single-story commercial building. And we're doing that in response to direction from the commission and council early on to work with some of the key landowners as it related to some of their scenic corridor constraints for those properties in order to meet the goals of the plan. We're going to show a second animation. This will be going eastbound towards the Ultimot Hills, towards Tracy, looking south. And this is the other side of the Isabel Neighborhood Plan, the south side.
These are all 45-degree.
These are 45 degrees.
Not 90.
Not 90. And we do have other animations available, so this will be 45 degrees. We're just going under the Airway Boulevard Interchange. So this represents the Airway Business Park that you see out there today. The frontage road of Kitty Hawk. This is still the business park, there's Livermore Ford there on your right. Now we're approaching the Isabel Interchange, and the parking structure would be somewhat obscured by the interchange behind the trees, but you will see glimpses of it. This is the pedestrian bridge from the parking structure to the BART station that will be built by BART. Here's some of the trees along the Arroyo. And to your right is some of the new residential development that would be built as part of this plan on G and M Farms. And we transition here to where the existing sound wall is. And now we're coming up to the Portola Overpass. And just to your right, one of the exception areas is down by Myriad and Portola, and we're asking for some minor exceptions to the scenic corridor to allow them to build two- and three-story multifamily projects, which is similar to what is out there in the neighborhood already. We have done six animations total, so we have animations at 90 degrees, and we have animations looking across the freeway, if the council would like to see those as well.
You mean going, for example, you mean going east and looking to the north?
Yes. Going, so going eastbound, looking north across all the freeway lanes, we have that animation and the opposite way as well.
Be kind of interesting.
Okay. But I've got, before you go to the new one, the one we just saw, we've got, it sort of ended with a sound wall. But before that was housing right up against the freeway. And what I don't understand is why that wouldn't have a sound wall.
The housing that you saw in the animation was set back a little bit from the freeway. It was off of East Airway Boulevard, which is a frontage road to the freeway. The individual projects there will need to do a noise study. So what we did show was any sound walls that existed or would be needed for the BART extension, but each development project would need to do a project-level environmental, including noise study.
That housing is where the corn maze is in October, right?
That is correct.
It's just my, you know, I've lived here for now 40-some, 42 years, and I've seen what happened to 680, and I've seen, my presumption is as highly likely if you were to put a subdivision like that right near the freeway, that a sound wall would be included. And I'm just want to make it clear, are you saying you don't think so? Or, that's TBD, but it's just my belief that a real life is going to put a sound wall there.
So in the BART EIR, they did show that there would be a, one sound wall, which would be actually on the south side of East Airway Boulevard, where the existing residential is, east of Sutter Street. It would be a, and that was because of the noise generated on East Airway Boulevard, the traffic. It would not be a significantly tall sound wall like you see along the freeway. They did not show any other sound walls that would result from the project.
On the video headed westbound, how tall were those buildings? The first set of office buildings that we come upon?
So those would generally have a height limit of about 65 feet.
So there's six stories?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm not sure I got an answer to my question. You said they didn't show any, but my question was, am I wrong in assuming that it's highly likely that there would be one based on the experience of the last 40 years of what happens?
Your staff has had a little bit of a loss, we don't have the data to prove that. So I think the most honest way of saying that is that for that section of G and M, that is a possibility. We don't have the hard data to back that up, that analysis. That analysis would be done at the time of the actual application. Those property owners have noted that they don't have any plans in the short run to actually make that application. But I think your observation is it's possible those are noticeably closer units than the units on the north side of the freeway.
So we can go ahead and show the other visual simulations if you're interested?
Well, I am, I don't know whether anybody else is.
All right.
Sure.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead, Neil, and we'll run.
Eastbound, looking north.
Let's go ahead and run, yeah, number two. So this would be, this should be going eastbound towards the Ultimot Hills.
Looking north.
And looking north at 45 degrees. So now you're looking across the freeway lanes to the north. So again, you're in the business.
Is that the Chamberlain area there?
Yes, the Chamberlain is just off to your left, you're just passing it.
Thanks.
And this is the Airway Boulevard Interchange. And you'll note that there's BART tracks in the median here with the fencing. Now you're seeing the, sort of the core business park area of the neighborhood plan with some residential as we come closer here to the Isabel Interchange. So this is sort of densest development in this core area. Now you see the BART station itself in the freeway median with the pedestrian bridge connection above. And now we're looking at the Shea Sage development that you see that's nearly completed out there.
Is that where BART goes underneath?
Yes. Yes, just about here, BART will go underneath and then pop out on the north side of the freeway. And we have no more development on the north side as part of the plan, but the tail tracks for the yard would be going. for the yard would be going parallel to the freeway and the north side of the freeway, go underneath Portola overpass, and then take a turn up towards the north. Okay?
Yeah, thanks. I, I got a question on that. Initially, it looked like the vegetation was fairly sparse and not very high next to those buildings. Is that the eventual height that's planned, or is this what your initial construction?
Regarding the vegetation? So there's a couple of things. In order for BART to come down the freeway, it'll need to be widened. So some of the existing vegetation would go away and then we'd be planting new vegetation as projects come in on a project-by-project basis along the freeway, consistent with the design guidelines and standards in the plan. So it is modeling some new vegetation as well as some existing vegetation, sort of a combination.
The question was, of that vegetation that is shown next to those taller buildings, it only went up partway. But there are trees that are taller than that. My question is, is it anticipated that you would only have short trees, or you're going to have trees that go up along the height of the building? I mean, it's just a very straightforward question.
Sure. So we'll have a variety of trees, some that will be taller than what you see here and some that will be smaller, more decorative ornamental trees. But it'll be a combination of both.
And some, some of the vegetation was removed so you could actually see the heights of the building and the impact there. But your actual view essentially after maturity of your vegetation would have a significant component of vegetation as you look across at those buildings, especially on the oblique views.
We intentionally didn't want to show too much vegetation for the modeling, just to be conservative and really focus on the impact on the scenic views.
So you're saying it'll look better?
All right, so we can show the view as we go. Neil, why don't we show number three? So we'd be going westbound at I-580, looking at 90 degrees, looking north. So again, you're driving west towards Pleasanton and you're going now under the Portola Avenue
This is the bored child in the back of a station wagon view. Normally, people don't look 90 degrees.
Yeah. This is the Shea Sage project and the new development west of Shea Sage we have modeled there. Just passing that, and again, we're back to the office core on the BART property and the pedestrian bridge. The Isabel interchange and some of the core office development again. And then we transition down to lower-rise business park for the remainder of the planning area. Again, this area would be subject to the scenic, current scenic corridor policies. Here's the Airway Boulevard interchange and here's the gateway property.
The Chamberlain site.
Chamberlain site. Again, we have asking for exceptions for the, to allow one-story commercial buildings, and that's the casino building.
Without any of the cars.
Oh, yeah, without any of the cars, casino building. If you'd like, we can show you the 90 degrees traveling east, looking south, if you would like.
How about the one going west, looking?
South?
Yeah.
Sure.
45.
Okay. Westbound, looking south would be number five, Neil. So we're traveling towards Pleasanton, looking across the freeway to the south. So we're going under Portola now, and here's the sound wall that you see out there today. Again, this is some of the residential you would see on the G and M farm site. And then the parking structure is next, behind some of the trees. And here's the, again, the BART station.
Now, the residential on the G and M site, that's, is that roughly equivalent, the same setback as what we see at Shea right now from the freeway? It looks like it might even be a little bit further than the current Shea. I'm not.
All right.
I think it's close.
Yeah. It's only separated by a road.
It would be a little bit closer.
A little bit closer.
Yeah, just the, the first row, but I mean, the site's 20 acres. So I think what, most of what you're seeing there will be farther back.
Yeah, because it curves.
Right.
To the back. And then even, even if a sound wall is required, it's still Caltrans that would be responsible for building the sound wall typically? And what's our control, Neil?
Caltrans typically would build a sound wall for a freeway widening project where the project itself creates an impact on existing sensitive receptors. It, it's really up to the city when we approve the various developments to review the, the sound impacts and decide if we need, you know, any additional mitigation. The Isabel Neighborhood Plan Environmental Impact Report already has, you know, studied noise levels out there and have identified kind of a menu of construction techniques that help reduce noise impacts. But we need to look at, you know, each specific individual development, particularly those that are closest to the freeway.
Got another question. You showed the design of the BART station. How does that get determined?
Well, that's a concept design that BART created to do their cost estimation for the project. BART, if the conventional BART is approved, would be doing more detailed design and we would invite BART to come out and share their designs with us through a design review process.
And we have an impact on it?
I think they would listen to our input.
I'm just thinking about the West Dublin Pleasanton BART station.
I will say, we have been coordinating with them on the conceptual design. And so we included about, I want to say, six measures specifically on the design of the parking structure that have been pulled from this Isabel neighborhood planning process as well as just our general city standards for high-quality design. So they, the BART EIR does already have some visual mitigation measures that we've contributed to, as well as just generally reviewing their plans along the way and providing input. They have been responsive.
So that's all, we only have one other visual simulation if you'd like to see, and that's the driving eastbound, looking south at 90 degrees.
Go ahead.
All right, so that's number four, Neil. This would be our last one. So we're driving east toward the Ultimot Hills, looking south at 90 degrees. So a kid in the backseat of the station wagon. So again, this is the Airway Business Park. That's Kitty Hawk Road, the frontage road in the foreground with the cars on it. That's the Isabel interchange, and here's the parking structure. The pedestrian bridge, and this is the residential development on the current G and M farm And I just want to point out one last thing as we go underneath Portola here. There's, that's the exceptionary called Portola, and it's to just slightly modify the height limits to allow two- and three-story buildings. You'd still see views of the hills, however, above the rooftops, even with that exception. So those are the animations. And I just have a couple more slides, and then we'll be finished and be happy to answer Keep going. One more, one more. Okay. So just a quick, a quick summary. We did prepare a draft environmental impact report for the project as required by SEQA. We put it out for public review, as you can see, in January and February of this year. We received about 23 comments, and we have responded to all of those comments in our final EIR, which is first of all, available on the city's website. We have copies in the lobby as well tonight for the public to look at if they would like. So we have the draft EIR, the final EIR, response to comments, statement of overriding considerations, all the elements that are required by SEQA are included in our final EIR. And we did have a sort of a final public review period from April 27th to May 7th for the commenting agencies to look at our response to their comments, and we didn't receive any further comments during that time period. We did do some additional outreach this year, in addition to the outreach that Laurie described in over the last year and a half. We had a couple of public open houses. We met with some of the landowners. We met with a couple of the neighborhoods. So all that input, again, came back into staff, and we use that input to help put the final touches on the plan. We met with some key stakeholders, Chamber of Commerce, the Osipasidis College, the Labs, to make them aware of the plan again and get their feedback. And finally, we went through the city's advisory bodies as required. We went to the airport commission, the city's airport commission. We went to the county airport land use commission. We went to the city's historic preservation commission, and finally, the planning commission on May 1st. And the staff reports and minutes for those meetings are in your packet for your review. So finally, what we're asking the council to do this evening is to, planning commission staff are recommending that the city council adopt the, certify the environmental impact report and adopt the Isabel neighborhood specific plan and all the necessary amendments that go with that, including the long list of ordinances and resolutions to enact the zoning and general plan changes, to put the Isabel neighborhood plan in place and to allow it to become effective. And I did want to point at one other item. We did give you a supplemental memo this evening that includes a letter that we received very recently from Shea Homes. It also includes a revised ordinance with a small change on acknowledging the Shea Homes DA that we have, development agreement in that area, and how this plan does or does not affect that development agreement. And we do address some of the issues brought up by Shea Homes in the supplemental memo for you to review. And with that, staff is available for any questions you may have.
Questions for staff?
I'd just like to say, thanks very much. It's very complete and lots of material to review. And I'm eager to hear what the public has to say.
Just a clarification. You made reference to the airport protection zone. And in actuality, the airport protection zone was created to protect the airport because it was related to sound impacts and, and not to, it's not a safety consideration. It was concerned about sound impacts from the airport.
Yeah, our review of it when it was first adopted was primarily to decrease sound impacts.
Right.
For the residents and to minimize noise complaints to the airport.
Right, so it's, so it's not a safety consideration, it's a noise consideration, really to protect the airport. Okay. Because when you say protection zone, a lot of people think the other way around. Yeah. So protecting the airport, actually.
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Have you, may I ask, just have you anticipated any, looking at the location of the housing, traffic impacts on Isabel, 580 entrances either way? Has there been any consideration of that? I haven't heard a thing about traffic yet. And there's no doubt 4,095 units will have an effect on traffic all over town, but especially locally.
Sure. So the environmental impact report looked at traffic considering build-out of the Isabel neighborhood plan. It also assumes certain improvements in the vicinity, such as, including improvements proposed by BART for the BART extension. So there are improvements on Isabel Avenue and in the area at the intersection of Isabel and East Airway. East Airway itself would be widened from Isabel up to the BART station. North of the freeway, Isabel Avenue would actually be narrowed. We have, you know, it was designed to expressway standards, and we're trying to create a more walkable environment. But we'll keep the same number of lanes. We'll just remove some of the excess pavement.
A little, little personal reference there. I lived in Hayward at the time. They widened 880 to come down south of 238 to the south side of town to Union City. And it didn't really solve anything as of all the building that went in there. In fact, it's just fully at capacity when it was completed, and which pumped me to move to Livermore. So, you know, it's, it's, yeah, worked out for a while. So that's just one of the things that comes to mind right now, because I saw they expanded the number of lanes, they widened the entrances and everything, and all of a sudden, we're at a standstill instantly when it was completed. So I just wanted to have that caveat in mind as we go forward with this, if we go forward with this.
So, and one of the things to keep in mind is, these units are actually in your existing general plan. So all of our traffic analysis essentially includes these units already in your build-out, in our traffic analysis on the network. And so essentially, what we're talking about is moving units from one location in the city to another. So that does have localized impacts, you are correct. But we're not adding to the total amount of development in the city of Livermore with this plan. We're, we're locating it in a particular neighborhood.
And that's where I was leading with the question, if you're, if you're done with yours. How does this relate to our housing implementation plan? Because I, I think initially, and people will read articles and they'll see the slide saying 4,000 new units. This isn't 4,000 new units in the next two or three years. And it's not 4,000, it'll be new homes, but it's not, as the city manager said, it's not new units. It's taking allocations that we had elsewhere and putting it in this neighborhood. So how does that affect the housing implementation plan? Because currently, we're at, what is it, 400 to 750 units per year with the, around there with the housing implementation plan? How does this affect that?
So one of the amending, or one of the actions you'll be taking this evening is to amend the 2017, 2019 housing implementation program to now include the Isabel neighborhood plan. So stepping back, our general plan has a housing range of 140 units to 700 dwelling units per year. This plan doesn't change that. That policy stays in place. What happens now is through our housing implementation program, that's how we allocate units. And we're asking that the current HIP be amended to include 200 units a year to now be allocated to the Isabel neighborhood specific plan. And we're moving those 200 units a year from the TDC projects. So instead of 400 a year to TDC, now it's going to be 200 a year to TDC projects and 200 a year to Isabel neighborhood plan projects. And 50 a year to anything else that's not in those two programs. So essentially, we're working with the current 450 dwelling units per year that's in the hip and just reallocating units now to this plan.
And, and that's what I wanted to make sure that we were clear on, is that this is not increasing our, our growth rate or changing the hip. It is, it is shifting numbers. It is taking, because quite frankly, we've been hearing a lot of concern from residents about some of the infill projects or projects going out at Greenville, you know, off of Vasco. And here, we're able to reallocate some of those units along Isabel, closer to the freeway, not across town. I'd like to point out, the outlet mall doesn't really affect traffic around my neighborhood. We haven't really heard complaints about people being impacted by the outlet mall or Casino 580. Other, you know, heavy, not to compare the casino traffic to the outlet mall, but we were talking about the parking up the street from the casino. That's not in a residential neighborhood. So I think that's one of the things that we need to make sure that we're very clear about this project, that it's taking other locations that we would be installing these units throughout town and putting it units throughout town and putting it out here at Isabel at this key intersection of 84 and 580 and hopefully with a BART extension for people to ride BART instead of drive, hopefully, so.
Do you have any questions? All right, we have 20 cards for the public hearing. So let's take just about a five-minute break and then we will launch into public comment and everybody gets a chance to stretch their legs and take a breath of fresh air and we'll be back. Thank you. Okay, it's bringing on back here. This is part two of the May 14 meeting of the Livermore City Council. We've just gone through the staff report for 5.01, which is the Isabel neighborhood plan. And now we're going to open up the public hearing and hear what the folks have to say about this. With that, we have Daryl Ray. And by the way, I asked that you keep your comments to three minutes or less and if you like what somebody else said, say what that guy said and we can move it along. So great, but I still want to hear what everybody has to say tonight. Daryl Ray, Gordon Jacoby, and Kathy Chase.
Mr. Mayor and city council members and staff, I thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Daryl Ray. I am a pilot, a 10-year hanger tenant at Livermore Airport. My comments are regarding the Isabel neighborhood specific plan. While as a commuter, I am in favor of extending BART along the 580 corridor and would be able to take BART and to be able to walk to the airport would be a wonderful thing. However, locating this project with this many housing, this much housing, in so close to the airport has, raises big concerns for me. If it was just looking at a BART station at the Isabel site, I would be very happy, but because of BART's multi-story, requirement for multi-story transit-oriented development at the new station, there are serious public safety issues are created. The proposed housing development is located very close to the airport and more critically, right under the aircraft traffic pattern for runway 25 right. Aircraft in the pattern will fly directly over this high-density populated area. The aircraft are descending and slowing as they turn towards the airport's runway. Most airport accidents occur during takeoffs and landings. And so I cannot imagine a worse place to put high-density housing, particularly this corner on the northeast, because that is the busiest runway and the most, 25 right is usually the one that's active because of the way the winds go. So people are landing slow and turning at that point, right over this new housing. Not only that, we're talking about multi-story housing as aircraft are descending. So the aircraft are getting closer to the ground and the buildings are getting higher. I'm aware that aircraft have crashed in or near this area in the past. And unfortunately, people have died, but they've been the pilots or occupants of the aircraft. With the current plan, Livermore residents on the ground could be killed or injured. The city's airport commission, whose main interest is to keep the airport safe for its pilots and residents, and the residents of Livermore, voted against approving this plan. And that has not been said tonight. It's just been mentioned that they had a chance to review it, but they did not approve it. And so this high-density housing actually occurs within the airport protection zone, which of course you mentioned is for the airport's protection, but the traffic pattern is also over this same area. For this reason, I respectfully ask that the city council find some alternative so that the high-density housing is moved further east and well clear of the airport's traffic pattern. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Gordon Jacoby, Kathy Chase, Andreas Cluver, I'm sorry. Please. Which slide? Can we bring that up? The airport protection zone?
Just the planning area is fine, thank you. And I'll just wait for Mr. Mayor for a moment if I could. Well, let me, so I know you have a busy schedule. My name's Gordon Jacoby and for the last 30 years, I've represented Livermore Venture Partner Property, which is the pie shape as it has been for the last 30 years. We have participated through the EIR process, tried to become a part of the plan. Told probably we shouldn't consider it because in 2002, when the urban limit line was adopted, it wasn't drawn across the top, but it excluded us. Up until that point, in the 90s, we worked extensively with the college, including providing them land, doing studies for them. And at the time, the line was drawn, we're working in detail on providing affordable housing on our property that would then serve the faculty and working students. We have submitted through your process, many questions. The primary one was where's the information on how you'll achieve the numbers? It's one thing to talk about 10% or 20%, 15%, but it's a lot harder task to show the financing on how you've done that. I've done that. We were the first developer to put affordable housing projects into an industrial park, very low-income families with a daycare center. Hard, complex things to do. Many layers of financing, many layers of commitment on the part of the property owner and the city. I'm here to say that I know I didn't get in this one. I know this is the first stage as you therefore go on to the MTC and ABAG. I was a bag, MTC planner, helped do the plan for the light rails, know very well where the law is going and the importance of including real affordable housing. I doubt you have now the commitments, the type of commitments you're going to need to show those agencies, particularly from the key landowners. Because at this point, they don't have a clear idea of what the cost is, the burden they will, to participate in creating 1,000 units. In closing, we do, we're willing to achieve the 30% would be required. And we know we will have to provide not only free land, and we have done that before and we brought in a partner called EH Housing, who's second-largest builder, manager in the Bay Area, specialty on not only very low income, but also housing for students, working population on campus, off campus, and also a particular passion, I know of the current chancellor doing housing for veterans. We have a site that we'll dedicate for that. Thank you. We wish you well. We wish you would give us a chance to be more active participant on it. And as you run into roadblocks going to MTC and ABAG, we're very willing to help on that. Thank you.
Mr. Jacoby, thank you. Kathy Chase, Andreas Cluver, Dale K.
I can't add too much to what the first speaker said because I have long felt that this development in relationship to the airport is not a development issue, it's a safety issue. And nowhere in any of the stories that I have read to this point has that been made an issue to the public, nor has it even mentioned in this. The fact of the matter is, when airplanes hit the ground, bad things happen. And if there's a housing unit in between that impact, worse things happen. Now granted, it's happened before in this area and it hasn't happened for a while, but it is something that gravely has to be considered. So I will leave that option, but as I've said before, I lived here for 52 years. When BART was first proposed, the station at Isabel was never a possibility. Most people in the valley wanted the station either at Vasco or preferably at Greenville. Somewhere along the line, all of the outside entities have decided that the people of Livermore needed this station at Isabel. So this has been forced planning and forced development on us. And I'm not sure that an awful lot of the people are really willing to consider what's going to happen to the scenic views that we fought for years to keep around here. There was at one time, a state designation on 680. California was a state scenic highway designation through there. Caltrans decided, oh, we need some sound walls. Look what's happened to 680. Can you see those beautiful views that I used to enjoy back in the late 60s? No, you can't. All you see are 15-foot sound walls. And if you think it won't happen through here, we all better think again. So I think this is going to be a huge, obviously it's going to be a huge change for everything, but I think the safety issues of the airport and the scenic and aesthetic development and changes that this station are going to bring to the entire valley need to be considered very strongly. Six-to-eight story buildings are not compatible with airport traffic pattern. And yes, the traffic pattern is right over that development. Shay Holmes' Sage Development is right under the traffic pattern as well. Now before, in the past, we have had fights over sound. Now unless there is a mitigation clause or something or other in every single house that is sold over there, there's going to be problems complaining about noise and everything. We've had to pay for noise tests and everything else for years in the past to fight the people over in Pleasanton and everything else over it. I don't want to go through that again, but it will happen, I'm sure. I am just not pleased with this whole development because I don't think that it really is in the long run going to work well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chase. Andreas Cluver, Dale K., Nancy Bankhead.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and council members. My name's Andreas Cluver, Secretary Treasurer with the Alameda County Building and Construction Trades Council. And I'm accompanied tonight, we've got some members from some of the other unions that make up our council. I think we've got folks from IBW 595, from Sprinkler Fitters, Painters Allied Trades and Sheet Metal Workers. And we're here tonight to ask you to include some language in the specific plan that's going to provide working opportunities for Livermore residents and good middle-class careers on the construction side. Obviously, there's been a lot of thought and a lot of work that's gone into the specific plan. It sounds an exciting project that is going to be good not only just for the city, but also for the region. It is, it sounds like it's very dependent on the BART expansion or extension to Livermore. We have been strong supporters and advocates for that extension. But the specific plan does not address the issue. I mean, the plan addresses many issues in terms of affordable housing, the design, the issues of noise and traffic and so forth, but there's no mention of any guarantees or mechanisms within the specific plan to promote good careers on the construction side for Livermore and Tri-Valley residents. So we have submitted, I'm hoping that most of you have gotten a copy of language that we have submitted, just a couple sentences to include into the specific plan. We hope you consider that. This is language that has gone into many specific plans in the area, in San Francisco, Berkeley, Oakland, Newark. We have gotten similar language in there. So we hope you take a good look at that language, you consider it and hopefully include it into the specific plan. So if there's any questions, I can be available. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cluver. Dale K., Nancy Bankhead, David Nelson.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and members of city council. It's back.
It happens.
It happens. I'm Dale K., the CEO of Innovation Tri-Valley Leadership Group. And we are just finishing a report with the Bay Area Council that will be published in July and we will be releasing it in this area, but it points to the need, and we've heard this for a long time, but it certainly makes a very strong point, pointing to the need for smart transportation and housing planning as vital to sustaining our quality of life and economic vitality. Livermore's already very much applauded in this report and one of the reasons is for its plans for the Isabel neighborhood. The report speaks to the benefits that BART can bring to Livermore and that the Isabel plan will bring to the city and to the region. So we do believe that a conventional BART extension, which has the most ridership and environmental benefit, is the most cost-effective. Many of these people in this room know that there are some other alternatives that would not be successful, so we are strongly advocating for BART to Livermore. And not only that, the BART extension to Livermore enables over 4,000 homes, as we've heard, for our workforce and for our children who have lived here with their parents but would like to come back and have a house and work here as well. So it is important, I think, you know, our city manager pointed out very well, but I just want to repeat it, that these houses were already accounted for in the city's general plan. So the Isabel neighborhood plan just moves these houses into a planned, walkable development on the western edge of the city that is adjacent to transit. Now that is what is called smart planning and that is what the Bay Area Council hopes all city does because they will follow your example. We urge you to adopt the Isabel plan because it will bring BART to Livermore, we hope. It certainly gives us the best chance. We know from our report that businesses want to move here, so there will be room for that in the development as well. Nascent businesses or businesses moving from San Francisco and Silicon Valley to a better quality of life. It does have affordable housing requirement in it, I believe, which would be very good for what we've talked about many times, but what somebody was very eloquent about at the beginning of this meeting celebrating Affordable Housing Week. So we think it's a very, very smart plan and we applaud you for looking at this because the future is coming very fast. So thank you for being so smart about it.
Thank you, Ms. K. Nancy Bankhead, David Nelson, Evan Branning.
Hi, I'm Nancy Bankhead. I went to the BART meeting last week. There were very few people there from Livermore, but it was apparent that if this plan is not passed, BART has, will not come. It's one thing for them not to, or a lot of things for them not to come. It's the reason for them not to come, which is really sad. BART bought the Isabel property in the 70s. It was always planned to have an Isabel station and then the Altamont station. And I am for BART coming to Livermore. We need it, we need this housing. There's made in half an hour, half a mile vicinity so that people walk and ride their bikes to BART and do other things than have cars in that area, which is why it's high in density, which is what I was told by city staff, who has done a fantastic job in explaining it. If you've gone to the meetings, they told you what you needed to hear, why they were doing this and why they were doing that. The one problem I have, and I think everybody knows it, is the storage and maintenance yard out in north Livermore. We don't want it, we don't need it. Let it go to the Altamont. I don't care, there's other places it can go. Please don't put it out in that valley, but please help us bring BART to Livermore. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bankhead, and thank you for coming to that meeting. David Nelson, Evan Branning, Doug Mann.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm actually here also as a representative of the Building and Construction Trades Union. We also represent over 1,000 families here in Livermore that rely on the construction industry for their monthly income. I also am a member of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers and a longtime resident of Livermore. I moved here in 1987. I've raised two kids in Livermore. They're both graduates of Granada High School. I love this town and I want to thank every one of you for being a part of this great city of Livermore. We put a letter in front of you, I hope you have it. There's a couple of things, I'm not going to touch on everything Andreas Cluver touched on, so I'll try and make as brief as make as brief as possible. But a couple of things in the language that we're proposing allows some of the residents here in Livermore the opportunity to work on this development if it is adopted. You'll notice in there, there is a local hire clause that would allow a percentage of the project to be done by local residents of Livermore. There's also some language in there that talks about supporting the middle class of encouraging a percentage of people working on this project to be in a local apprenticeship program. So we would certainly love for you to consider this if you adopt this development. So some of this money under construction will stay here in Livermore and support some of the residents here in town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. So in case you're wondering what that bumping and thumping is, there's a raccoon back there. Listen, he's moving into the council chambers once we move out.
You know, if something comes through the wall, don't be surprised if you see all of us just—well, yeah, I'll run.
Hopefully, I can make it through my comments.
We'll make it speak. Okay, Evan Branning, Doug Mann, and John Stein. Mr. Branning.
All right, good evening. My name is Evan Branning, and now I'm representing the BART to Livermore Coalition, hence why I always have some introduction at the beginning. So I'd like to speak out in favor of this project. I think that this is a really lovely project. We're looking at an opportunity right now to create jobs in Livermore, to build housing in a location near transit, as well as to get full BART coming out to Livermore. This project will actually be the best opportunity we have to get full BART coming out to Livermore in our lifetimes. This project will create nine—over 9,000 jobs in the area, meaning that it will help take people off of the road. It will help promote the BART station at Isabel, as one that could have reverse commuters. It will help bring people to our new downtown, allowing visitors to come in on the weekends, creating one of the busier stations, and certainly, I believe, the busiest end-of-line station in the entire system. This project will also allow for housing to be built in a way that is sustainable for maintaining the urban growth boundary by putting a higher-density housing near transit. It will also help with reducing congestion by bringing workers into Livermore instead of everyone commuting out from Livermore. All in all, I think that this project is absolutely necessary, and I do hope you will approve it. I also hope—and I would like to add for everyone in the audience right now—that this project is contingent upon BART being built, and that is not a sure thing currently. There's going to be a meeting on May 24th, and they have moved the meeting to an evening meeting, so we'll be able for more people to attend, as well as the members of the BART Board of Directors are still listening to comments from the public. So please, if you are interested in BART coming to Livermore, reach out to all nine members of the BART Board of Directors, not just our own. Reach out as well by attending the meeting on May 24th. Please come out, speak publicly. Please contact the members of the BART Board. We can have this project. It can be completed. Hopefully, I will live long enough to see the end, and this is the best opportunity for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Branning. Doug Mann, John Stein, Nick Gregory.
Good evening, Sarah, and City Council members also. I'm here because I was reminded about this by John Stein, who I will agree with in advance of him speaking on this issue. I agree with him on the issue and as I agree with him on many issues, actually. What he pointed out was that the scenic corridor is something that we fought very hard to achieve. And as I watched the animations, it occurred to me something that is a struggle that I have, actually. Some of you know, I have a very large video production studio in Pleasanton. Some of you have seen it. And I've always struggled with how to take a picture of it and have it convey the size that it is. No matter what I've ever done, it seems like I can't represent what it looks like until people come and they say, wow, this is a lot bigger than I thought. And that's what I got from these animations today. Sage is awful. Sage is striking when you drive by it now. When I see the animations, it doesn't look so bad, but as most of us who drive the freeway now know, it's terrible. And if you're planning anything like that, you gotta not do it. I mean, let's keep—the airport or the scenic corridor as it is. I think it's also important to remind ourselves how we got here. The only reason why we're considering putting a massive housing development here of 4,000 houses is because the MTC had the nerve to, after making us wait for BART all these years, to say, you know what? We're not going to put it in unless you build a whole bunch of houses. And given the choice, we said, okay, we'll come up with a plan. We want BART that bad, so we started this. What I'm worried about, from what I'm hearing here, is that if BART does not approve full BART, that the focus is then going to be, well, we didn't get BART, but we've done all this work on it, so let's put this in. You need to give Mr. McPartland absolute ammunition to demand full BART by putting language in this today that says, you are not going to approve any conversion of the existing zoning unless we get full BART. You will immediately put the brakes on this, and you will stop it and bring us back to the current zoning and keep it a commercial area and a job center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. John Stein, Nick Gregory, David Best.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. This is basically a freeway-oriented development. In fact, Shea sells their houses by saying easy access to the freeway. And there are too many houses and not enough parking, as we've seen by the experiences of the East and West Dublin stations. The scenic corridor presentation is incorrect in that the scenic corridor says that the view should be taken from the far-right lane, not the left lane, which tends to minimize the impacts looking north and maximize them looking south. So by nature, it's wrong. The other thing is, if you looked at this presentation, you almost didn't notice Shea Homes. Yet, driving down the freeway, it's totally obvious that it blocks a large portion of the hillsides and ridge lines. The other thing is, Shea's argument is, well, part of our new proposal that we want to go 18 feet above the plane is that it's obscured by the other houses that we built that went 18 feet above the plane. And that's a sort of a plan to eliminate the scenic corridor. It'll go not with a bang, but a whimper. With regard to the airport protection area, I was one of the authors of that. We worked very hard with property owners, the adjacent cities, and the county. And it was both to protect the safety of residents and to avoid noise complaints. At the time, there were accidents at Reed Hillview, Hayward, and Palo Alto, as well as Southern California, and that became a major issue. Also, it should be emphasized that the entire Airport Commission considered this project an existential threat to the future of the airport. One business jet crashing into the side of an apartment building, and you have to figure out how much it costs to relocate the airport and where you're going to put it. There are other questions about finances and wildlife corridors. The underpasses under 580, which is basically like a range of mountains or a river, are the only wildlife corridors connecting the Coast Range and the Diablo Range. And if you're going to make those recreational areas, you're going to essentially fragment the habitat and eventually result in the extinction of some of the large mammals and amphibians in the area. It will be a long-term thing, I mean, with inbreeding, but it will happen. There are other questions that we just heard about how there's been a drought, and there'll probably be another one in a few years. And where is the water coming from for this project? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Nick Gregory, David Best, Gary Marks.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Nick Gregory. I live in Livermore, and I'm apprentice in the union's Local 483. There are hundreds of people like me in Livermore where traditional four-year college did not make sense. Instead, I'm in a college-affiliated apprenticeship program that is approved by the state of California. I don't pay a cent for my training, and I'm getting a fair wage and benefits. Building out the Isabel neighborhood plan could create hundreds of apprenticeship opportunities for area's youth and returning veterans. Or it could be like the outlets, which are built with few, if any, apprentices. Other communities understand they can encourage the creation of good, middle-class jobs or let that opportunity be lost. Please include the suggested language to encourage the use of local construction workforce and apprentices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. David Best, Gary Marks, Russ Greenlaw.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. My name is David Best. I work for Shea Homes, and I'm also happen to be a 13-year-long Livermore resident. So I've been here quite a while myself. So Shea Homes has been involved with your staff for quite a while and anxiously tracking the progress of this neighborhood plan, and we're really excited that it's coming to fruition here tonight. We are a big supporter of this plan. We think it's a fantastic opportunity to put development where development belongs. And as a previous speaker said, that the only reason for doing this is to get MTC funding, but I think there's a lot of other reasons for doing this plan. One is that currently in the Bay Area, we're producing about one house for every five jobs every year. So the ratio—so one of the reasons that affordable housing is an issue, one of the main reasons affordable housing is an issue in the Bay Area, is that we're just not producing enough housing. And so the best thing that we can do as a region to help the affordable housing crisis is to produce housing. We all remember our Econ 101, when supply—when demand far outstrips supply, your price is going to rise. So what you're doing here today is going to help provide housing for those people who really desperately need it. So we do, however, have a couple of concerns. And by the way, the Sage project, which we think is a fantastic project, and the buildings are beautiful, you do see them instead of the hills during certain points as you're traveling down Interstate 580. But I think if you look at your video simulation, the important views are the ones where you have oblique views of the hills as you're traveling westbound and looking at 45 degrees. Because, like was said earlier, we don't drive down the freeway like this, right? We drive down the freeway looking like that. So that leads me actually to one issue that we would like you to consider as a change to the plan. I call your attention to page 159 in your agenda packet, and there's an amendment to the view heights that looks like this. And it proposes that on the southern end of the Shea-owned property adjacent to our detention basin, that there's a maximum view height of 470 feet or a maximum building height of 470 feet. We would propose that you let that go up to 485. If you look at your simulation, again, I think you'll see that it really has no—virtually no impact on the views. As you're driving down, you'll see either two-story buildings or three-story buildings, and it doesn't really change the views of the hills beyond. By leaving it at 470, you're going to create a situation where we can only put two-story homes on that section of the project, and you're going to be putting the lowest-density homes where you're closest to the BART station. So we'd really like you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Best. Gary Marks, Russ Greenlaw, Splend, Splendorio.
That's the president of my HOA. My wife and I moved down here over the summer last year. She's been working at the lab for the last five years. I, myself, I'm an entrepreneur and business owner in the internet sector, so I'm probably one of the people that some people in this room blame for this happening, other people are grateful for. We have an interesting mix. I do thank you guys all for everything that's gone on and the team that put this together. I'm actually very happy in Sage. The highway noise and the airplane noise, we knew that going in. The airplanes, we kind of make a joke that if they just had machine guns on them, we'd be in the middle of World War II because we can hear the propellers going around. I'm an aerospace guy. I love planes. I don't mind the flight path. I understand the risks. So if you guys can work with them to do that flight path and figure out something to downplay the risk of where I'm going to have children with my wife, that would be fantastic. There's a few oddities about the way this is all structured. The first one is, it seems there is a political game going on between the Livermore area and BART. It's kind of a whose dick is bigger? Pardon my language. I'm glad to see a smile and a laugh. You guys have been taking a beating from everybody here. But you guys are saying this is conditional on full BART, but when I talk to the BART trustee and/or the board, the decision-makers there and the stakeholders, they have no intention of doing a full BART here. So you're playing the game of, well, we're going to approve this based on—and I want you to approve it, and they're going to go back and say, well, we only have half a billion dollars. We budgeted—we want $2 billion, but you're never going to get $2 billion, so we really can't approve the full thing, which is an asinine proposition. Again, pardon my language. So you're going to get them doing some half-assed—I'm upset, sorry. You're going to get them doing some kind of not meeting what this proposal requires. So then it goes over to another committee. We're looking at then doing ACE or some other combination out to Tracy, which sounds fantastic to me. But it also seems like if this was a public discussion, a lot of people in the room who have concerns might understand the bigger picture better and might be able to work and do a better job—pardon me—supporting what will eventually be a reality. We bought this house because the Shea Builders' sales office is saying, BART is coming here. Lo and behold, we do some research. Yes, it's coming. There's the proposition. Then I get an understanding of the politics involved and start showing up, and I love what people have said about it. But it seems like that's not going to be a reality. And I commute to San Francisco two days a week for client work, and I take my motorcycle. I split lanes for five miles, and if I didn't split lanes, I might not make one of the trains or two of the trains in that time, depending on traffic that day, whether it's people just not being able to drive properly—it's California—or the fact that there's too many cars in the road. So anything you guys can do to take cars off the road that improves our situation down here would really improve my quality of life. And we've come to love Livermore and hope to stay here for not only the next decade, but as long as we enjoy it and everything works. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Russ Greenlaw, Splend, Splendorio, Tim Frank. Mr. Greenlaw.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Russ Greenlaw. I've been a resident of Livermore for 41 years and an airport tenant for 40 years. Yeah, there've been a lot of changes. Every time the airport wants to make an improvement, the residents around the airport come out and complain about the noise. 4,000 units of housing that close to the airport means about 10,000 residents, maybe more. Do you really want 10,000 more noise complaints that close? That would be pretty much the closest residence to the airport. It's very nice pictures, very nice animation. I'm sure it costs a lot of money, but with respect to being close to the airport, it's in the wrong place. It really is in the wrong place. Definition of an airport: a bunch of farmland where you build runways, everybody comes and builds houses and complains about the noise. That's why the proper thing near an airport is called open space. Corn stalks, maybe some industrial buildings like Gillig, not 10,000 people right there. This development looks beautiful, but it's in the wrong place. If it were at North Livermore Avenue or out by Springtown where First Street comes in, it wouldn't be a problem to the airport, and the airport would not be a problem to the people. The other problem I have, it's also too close to the freeway. I lived in an apartment right alongside 680 in 1967, looking down on a two-lane freeway that was brand-new at the time. The noise was insufferable. You could not pay me enough to live right next to a freeway. I had a beautiful balcony, couldn't use it, couldn't go out there. Too noisy, just impossible. You need to consider noise. You want 60-foot-high sound walls to block the noise? This is a problem. It's a real problem. So beautiful idea, even though it's been— though it's been shoved down our throat by the unelected, unaccountable MTC and the unelected, unaccountable A-bag. All right? BART board's electable. Boy, we don't have that anymore. We have all these unelected outfits. Beautiful development, it's in the wrong place. It's going to destroy the airport. The people who live there won't like it. They won't like the freeway noise. They won't like the airport noise. Okay? I don't mind airplane noise. Can't stand freeway noise. It's much worse. There's no gap between the cars, the way there is, especially the trucks, motorcycles, the way there is between the airplanes. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Greenlaw. Splend- Splendorio, Tim Frank, John Steinbush.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand, council members. My name is Splend- Splendorio, and I'm also with Innovation Tri-Valley Leadership Group, and I'm chair of the Housing Infrastructure and Transportation Committee, which has been working with all of you and with the staff here to try to get this approved and move forward for the quality of life of our employers, which is who we represent. Innovation Tri-Valley represents the major employers in the city of Livermore, the labs and several other businesses of which you're well-familiar. And our biggest concern is the quality of life. And quality of life is always impacted by a couple of major things, of course, is getting to your job and moving goods. And when I think about it, since the days of the stagecoach, what has been important around here? Moving things and people from east to west and backwards. And here, you have an opportunity to assist that by having a full BART extend out to Livermore and hopefully connecting someday, which is what we advocate for, connecting by rail all the way to Central Valley, so that you can move people from east to west or west to east and help their quality of life. And also, I would like to also thank all the staff for doing such a good job here and maybe remind the BART board, which I intend to participate in on the 24th, that here you have a community that has worked very hard for years and embraces BART. And yet, you have so many other communities on the BART lines that do anything possible to avoid a development like this. And I think you should, and that's why I plan to say that on the 24th, that Livermore really believes in BART and wants to embrace it and wants to have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tim Frank, John Steinbush, and Patricia Rado.
Yes, good evening. I'm Tim Frank, and I'm the director of the Center for Sustainable Neighborhoods. We support both policies and projects that help build sustainable neighborhoods in regions. And we've been very supportive of BART's stationary area policy. We think it's incredibly important that we actually build compact, walkable neighborhoods around every BART station in the entire system. And we've been quite pleased with the reaction of the city of Livermore that has actually embraced that challenge and done what we think is quite a good job with the existing plan that you're looking at tonight. We're very pleased with the fact that it's a very nice, walkable neighborhood. There's a significant component of housing in it. We're extremely pleased to see the inclusionary component. The affordable housing is very, very important, and yet, there are very few places to have as much of a commitment to that as you have here in this plan, and that's quite good. One thing that we actually see that's missing, that we were pleased to see somebody bringing a solution to, is the question of the workforce development. Construction activity of this kind of scale creates a lot of construction jobs. And it's really important that we take advantage of that opportunity to make sure that we're leveraging that to support apprenticeship programs, so that we can actually train the people that can actually have the skills in order to actually make a decent, middle-class wage. And you have the programs around here that are providing that training. And all we really need is to make sure that development is actually doing their part in using the apprentices from these programs. That's something that would provide a benefit to the city in actually making available a decent, middle-class career for the construction workers that live in this area. And it's a contribution that you can make to the larger area, which has a shortage of skilled construction workers. So, we think that's an important thing to include. That said, we think that if you were to include that, this would be an exemplary plan and something we'd really be proud to support. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Frank. John Steinbush, Patricia Rado, Drew Felker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm John Steinbush with Colliers. I'm here tonight representing the Conder Group, Conder Investment Fund, that owns the two five-acre parcels on Comcast Court, as well as the Interstate 580 storage, existing storage facility. We've had many meetings with staff and responded to this process, which has been a multi-year process. And I want to commend the staff on responding to our concerns and addressing them, and in most cases, solving the issues. However, tonight, I want to make sure one other thing is brought up that came up at the Planning Commission on behalf of the Interstate 580 Storage Project. Ron Nahaus, who's the managing partner, spoke at the Planning Commission and addressed his concern about Table 2.1, the permitted land uses, it's the sub-paragraphs IB. And there's a footnote that they're going to put into the land use portion of the table that allows the Interstate Storage Project to exist as a permitted use, but it... because it's existing. And the concern has to do with a non-conforming use. And I've stood here before you a couple of years ago when you kicked off the project and brought this up, and we talked about dual land use on that piece of property, because it's not going anywhere. The project's only 10 years old. It's very successful. It will be there 20, 30, 40 years from now. It's not going to redevelop into residential. So, we met with Paul Spence and Lori and Ashley last week and talked about a solution where in the table under Transitional and Village, that this site or mini-storage, self-storage would be a permitted use. And it didn't get brought up yet tonight, and I'm hoping the staff will address this before you take your vote, and that we can include that as part of the neighborhood plan, so that that project has a legal-conforming land use that, say, a bank would look at when it's refinancing the project and see that the city acknowledges that it's there and it's a legal use and that there's not an issue moving forward. So, and possibly staff could address that.
This is in the council's supplemental packet.
Thank you, Mr. Steinbush.
It's in the council's supplemental packet, item number three. We have added the conditions that were referenced.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Patricia Rado, Drew Felker, Ally Felker.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak tonight.
A little bit closer to the microphone, please. There we go.
My name is Patricia Rado, and I've lived in Livermore for 53 years. I had left when I was 22 and purchased a property in Pleasanton, raising my two children. And I've never asked or expected anything in life for free. I have worked, been a single parent, was able to accomplish. I've been very blessed. Then, after my children were raised, I then took my two properties, sold it, and then came back to Pleasanton, back to Livermore, and purchased a ranch, which is right in the middle of this nightmare. I do agree that BART should come to Livermore. However, I'm right in the middle of this, and people are talking about scenic views down the freeway. This is going to be the scenic view in my front yard, the maintenance and storage. Everything I've done, I've put into this house. This is it. This was going to be my retirement, my forever ranch home. And it will lose about $800,000 in value. I've been on hold. All the... I had purchased a bunch of stuff to build onto my ranch, and all that stuff is just warped, no good. I've been on hold, absolutely devastated. I had written the board to consider purchasing my property, or at least buy me out on the difference of my loss, so I can just move on. And I was written back saying that my property wouldn't need to be purchased. For all these reasons, I am begging for... It just feels like I'm fighting for my life here, because it's everything that I put into all my life that I've worked in Livermore, never asked for anything free. I'm only asking for what's fair. I'm asking that if this goes, if the maintenance yard goes forward, not to mention the big houses that are going to be next to the ranch, I'm just saying, if the maintenance yard is going to be built, I am asking that you guys buy my property to make it a condition of the maintenance yard, to buy my property, or to at least buy the equity down, so I can leave, I can move. And I know it's going to be hard for me to find a ranch land that's going to be close, because I work seven days a week. So, it was important that I didn't have a ranch, that I had to drive 20 miles in, but I had to pay for that. And for somebody to lose and work as hard as I did as a single parent, never asked for anything free, to lose $800,000, it's a lot. So, I'm just saying, please, I'm asking for it to be made fair. My life feels like it has just stopped. And I'm asking for somebody to reach out. This has been going on for nine months, and my health has gone down. My desire to get up and just go to work every day is... It's not there anymore. Nothing is. So, I'm just asking if the maintenance does go out there, if they could please buy my land, or at least pay me down, so I can walk away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Drew Felker, Ally Felker.
Hey, council. I'm in support of BART to Livermore and this plan. And actually, I think even without BART, it'd be great to have this development go through. I think that we need more houses, and it'd be really nice to have more houses right here next to the freeway, because as someone who commutes, it's pretty bad. I mean, and if we can move some people off the freeway and onto BART, that'd be great.
Thanks, Felker. And Ally Felker.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to come and speak. I am also in favor of the BART extension to Livermore. I think it would alleviate traffic on the 580 corridor, and it would have environmental benefits as well. I think it also might reduce the risk of danger of car accidents if you're taking more cars off of the road. So, when we're talking about safety, especially with all the issues with the airport, I think that's something we should think about, is the amount of people who would then be taken off of the freeway. I think including housing with BART seems smart, because it would allow for people who are commuting to have the ability to not take the freeway and to live and then commute to work via BART. And this may sound a little silly, but I spent my teenage years living off of East Jack London, and we lived in that path where the airplanes would fly over. And we actually really enjoyed watching the airplanes come over, and my grandpa would run outside and pretend that he knew which ones they were. And it was a lot of fun, and those were good memories for me. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Felker. Okay, so that's all the cards that I've got. So, I'm going to close the public hearing, and let's bring it back to the council. Bless you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, a question for staff. Something that I forgot to bring up, and looking at this map here, school site. So, we have a overlay for a school site. That's if you can, if anybody has a laser pointer to point that out. My personal preference would not be to have a dual-use in that area. It would be a dedicated school site. That's one of the issues that I have with neighborhood plans, plans that do not... I think we need to do as much as possible to ensure that there is a school site in this area. I cannot stand having kindergarten commuters, people who have to drive across town. And the reason why I bring this up is, as you see, the overlay just so happens to be the charter school that shut down. Well, my daughter, she was well-represented at her school tonight. Altamont Creek had many awards. But we are over at the end off of Vasco, where my daughter currently attends Altamont Creek. When that school site shut down for the charter school, her class size darn near doubled. And it's not just kids that lived in the neighborhood that went all the way to the charter school. It's kids who wanted to go to their local school sites, but they're full, and now they're coming out to Altamont Creek. So, I am very sensitive for K through eight, or K through middle school, having at least a chance of a walkable site. So, if it's possible to remove the hash marks, I don't know if I need to make an amending motion and just call it a designated school site. I don't know what the... If that increases our chances of it being a permanent school site, I know there's existing buildings there. I don't think that restricts somebody from opening up another business in those buildings. But I guess my general question is, what more can we do to ensure that that is an actual school site?
I didn't understand, speaking of that, I have sort of... It's stated in page 114 that the former charter school site's the only place where a K-12 school is allowed. Why is that? I mean, that's a... I think with what...
It's building on what I'm saying, yeah, but...
Sure. So, the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan says that no new school should be located in Zone 6, Safety Zone 6, which covers the vast majority of the planning area. And all of the other safety zones, they're also prohibited. So, really, the charter school was essentially grandfathered in before the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan was adopted. The charter school is already in the works. So, staff recommends that as the most appropriate place for a school, because it's already been analyzed and used as one. So, the school district is looking at purchasing it, especially if this plan goes through, with the intention... Not that that's guaranteed, but that is the most ideal place for a school for that reason.
In answer to your question, Councilmember Svidowsky, you could do an amending motion to designate the primary use of that site as school.
Yeah, I had, I mean, it seemed to me we had a couple of themes. One was about the apprentice program, and I'm not exactly sure how to phrase that. But is that something that is possible? I mean, what are the options for that language?
And I was going to bring that up as well. Can I make a suggestion?
Go ahead, yeah, sure.
I think I have. When we're talking about making sure that we include local labor in projects, I would prefer to discuss that as a citywide policy rather than a neighborhood-specific plan policy. I know other communities have implemented it for specific plan areas, but I think that maybe we need to have the discussion of adopting more of a citywide policy than just a neighborhood-specific. And that wouldn't necessarily be tonight. And whatever we discuss as a citywide policy would then apply to the specific plan as well. So, I don't know if that's something that...
Well, I mean, I don't care either way. I just... Are those kinds of things possible? I guess is what I'm getting at, rather than whether we do it tonight or some other time.
We've looked at this in the past. Jason, I'll call your city attorney. We've looked at local preferences in the past. There are some opportunities. It is nuanced. If it is in the interest of the council to pursue that, either for this project or citywide, I would recommend that you direct staff to research that and bring you back the options, and we can have a bit more of a finer discussion about that, as opposed to doing this off the cuff. We did receive this information, I believe, today is when I first received this. I would like the opportunity to analyze that, if the council's interested.
Yeah, I would be interested in further analysis and having a citywide discussion. Like I said, I don't like, you know, I think when we talk about using local labor for future development projects, it's more of a citywide discussion than a specific neighborhood plan. But I do understand their request.
See, another thing, somebody mentioned that they thought there ought to be a full stop if BART didn't approve it. And that's my understanding. Is that right? I mean, this becomes moot if BART decides not to vote for this on May 24th, all right?
Certainly. Let me walk you through what's before you this evening. Let me walk you through what's before you this evening. You have a series of five separate resolutions and five separate ordinances. Two of them take effect immediately, that's your SEQA resolution, and your resolution where you're requesting BART approve full conventional BART to Isabel. The remaining resolutions and ordinances are conditioned upon BART, the effectiveness of them is conditioned upon BART approving full BART to Isabel. I would make, I do have a recommendation, I was reading the language to your second resolution and your third resolution. That's for your Specific Plan 18-001, and your General Plan Amendment 18-001. Those resolutions, the trigger language says that those resolutions become effective upon, are approved upon BART approving full BART to Isabel. My recommendation is to make that, that it is, the language we revise to read, that the Livermore City Council approves Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan 18-001, conditioned upon BART approving a conventional full BART extension to Livermore, I'm sorry, to Isabel Avenue in Livermore. There's only two resolutions that have that error, that's those two resolutions, I would make that recommendation. That condition exists in all your other resolutions that don't take effect today, and your ordinances. So you do have those triggers built in, I would recommend modifying the ones in Resolution Two and Three to be consistent with the other ones, but that is in there.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear that, that if BART doesn't approve it, again, this doesn't move forward. The other question, or the other theme that came up was the airport and safety. Can, can somebody speak to that on, from the staff?
So, yes, we did, as was mentioned, we went to the Airport Commission. Well, first, let me step back, we went to the Alameda County Airport Land Use Commission in February, and we presented the plan, and they evaluated the plan, and determined based on the design of the plan where housing was, the noise impacts, the height of the buildings, they determined that the plan was consistently consistent with the adopted Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. Again, that's the plan that the Alameda County Airport Land Use Commission adopted in 2012, and the city subsequently adopted it in 2013 into our general plan. And that Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan has safety zones, it references FAA height limits, and it references a noise contours projected to occur at the Livermore Airport. Based on where we put housing and commercial development, our plan, the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan, is consistent with the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan for height, for safety, for noise. Then we went to the city's Airport Commission, and it was mentioned by one of the speakers, the Airport Commission had a lot of concerns about the plan, specifically about safety, specifically about noise impacts, and that between the noise and safety impacts, that this could create a problem for the future well-being of the airport, and it could even be shut down. We, however, again, based our analysis with the most current, up-to-date standards of the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, continue to recommend that this plan is consistent with those safety and noise standards. We do have an aviation consultant that did help us, that sort of specializes in this area, and in fact, Miranda's here tonight, that, and she could help answer some of those questions, we want to discuss that a little bit more.
So the Airport Commission was concerned about, what, that the complaints were going to be so prevalent after this plan gets built out from noise and potential safety issues, that the airport would then be forced to shut down?
That is correct, that's what some of the speakers said.
We are also incorporating conditions for notifications to be provided to all of the future property owners in this area, homeowners, notifying them about the rights of the airport, and that they are living in an area that may experience airport noise. So we're trying to make sure that everybody's aware, and nobody's going in with a misguided impression.
But with those notices, you bring with them a, anything developed there would be, you buy, you sign something that says you're not going to sue if somebody Cessna flies through their window?
No, we don't have any provisions like that, but they...
So I have a question for Mr. Best, though. Mr. Marx mentioned that when he bought his home in Shea, that he, he was informed about the noise and so on, is that what you typically do?
Please. Yes, that's correct. We have a disclosure that all of our homebuyers sign when they enter into a contract, and it describes what the surrounding uses of the neighborhood around the development are, and the airport is described in there, and there's a note that, that there may be noise impacts due to the airport, and that they acknowledge that.
So that's what, I don't know who said it, was Mr. Spencer, Mr. Riley, one of you said that, that would be the expectation?
Yes, essentially, it's an easement that's actually recorded against the property, so it's not only the first property owner, but every property owner has given up certain rights to live in that particular location. We have that in a variety of areas in the community where people give up certain rights to live in a certain place. South Livermore has a right to farm ordinance, where there's going to be 24-hour day operation sometimes. Those rights are given up, and essentially, that's a part of their deed when they buy that property.
Okay, thank you.
When I purchased my first home off of North P, it was in my disclosures that there will be aircraft noise because we were right in the landing path. And as I was rototilling my front yard to put the new lawn in right after I moved in, we had the B-24, the B-25, and the B-17 fly over, and my dad and I, we were just, I mean, some people actually enjoy, as we heard tonight, you know, hearing the planes and the roar, and when the P-51s flew over, it was, it was great. So I understand some concerns, I, I don't believe that we would ever receive a level of complaints to the point where we would shut down the airport. I, I just don't think that that's, I, I don't foresee that scenario playing out, where we would either shut down or relocate the airport due to complaints from people who knew full well what they were getting into when they moved in.
Well, you'd have to repay tens of millions of dollars back to the FAA for the grants. I think it's $55 million that we have to repay.
At, at least. One other thing, and Mr. Best came, came up, but I, I don't think you need to, to stand up again, with the, the Shea request, is that written into the memo as well for us to adopt? How, how was that handled, or do you need additional direction on that with the, the building heights?
It is not written in, so we would need additional direction from the council. It is, I think we have a slide that shows it.
Yeah, you had a slide. And one thing that I'd like to point out is the building heights match the existing, if you, if, if I read that correctly, I really can't read that there, my contacts are drying out at this point of the evening, but I believe that the, the homes adjacent to that area are at the 485 as well, currently? Is that correct? I'm seeing head nods.
Yeah, that's what it says.
Well, no, I mean, not, not to the north, but to the right.
No, I know, that's what I just said, to the right. Well, I did on...
Oh, you can read it on the paper, yeah, I can't, I can't see that there, and I was just putting it out for the audience. So what, one of the items that I wanted to point out, and the reason why, I mean, we looked at Sage initially, I believe I was on the planning commission, I may have been on council when it came back, so I think I got two bites at that apple. To not make an exception to the scenic corridor, I forget how many cubic yards of dirt would have been moved.
Eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, 800,000 cubic yards of dirt would have been excavated with the noise, not noise, but the, the dust and, and the environmental impact, plus one of the driving factors, and this relates to keeping it at 485, and, and this may, I, I know some people may not like this statement, but I would much prefer to see a single row of homes along the freeway than what you're seeing in some portions of Dublin where the homes are lower, and you get that sea of roof effects, where you just see, like, the endless roofs and development. I, I think it's much more preferable to have the, the, the single row of homes kind of blocking the view of the other homes. So I think that was, in addition to the grading, that grading would have caused that sea of, of roof effect, so that's why we kept it at that. So I would be willing to make the amending motion to match the, the building heights to the east and to the north of that, of that particular lot.
So you're exactly right, that's, the adjacent elevations are at 488 next to that 470. So if you went to 485, you'd still be a little bit...
So we'd be lower.
Still be a little bit shorter.
Okay, so lower is better.
And you're not actually going to see the hills beyond this particular line, so...
Right, so that doesn't affect the, I'm just, I, I'm saying it, it would affect the, the 485 and back of it. You would eliminate some of that, that terraced look of the roofs.
Right.
I have one more. Where do we stand with the tail tracks and the maintenance yard? This came up, I think, with one of our final speakers.
I've got a, if I could get a question in here. Sure. The, I've got it to the city manager, and the thing is, you know, although we're considering the, the approval of the overall plan tonight, I'm concerned about the potential for the BART yard in North Livermore. And I'd like to ask the city manager, are you satisfied that we have sufficient controls in place to ensure that BART selects a more appropriate yard location outside of North Livermore, such as south of the freeway?
So yes, we believe your plan has sufficient controls to do that. You recall that the overall specific plan is being considered for approval this evening, but the implementation of that is divided into phases. The documents in front of you this evening include specific language on that phasing, and one of the triggers or requirements for Phase Two, essentially anything beyond Phase One, which was described to you as essentially the housing that's generally next to other housing, much like it in Demeanor. Any development within Phase Two would not move forward until there's sufficient studies done, and BART has selected a location that is not in North Livermore, essentially is a more appropriate site. So those caveats are included in the documents that you have before you. So much like you're approving the plan this evening, if BART doesn't choose full BART, ultimately, there's no implementation of that plan at all. Essentially, your existing land use out there continues to be the land use in force. Each of the phases require specific actions. There will obviously be dozens and dozens of required actions by a whole variety of agencies to have the project move forward. This is a particular individual trigger that's one of the requirements for the implementation of the project.
So I, you know, along, the other observation I've got is that it doesn't seem to me that BART staff has been able to convince the BART board that a maintenance yard is even necessary, because if they did believe that, they would be offering us incentives to get a maintenance yard out here. So, and my own preference is that we get full BART to Livermore, it comes out here, and then get all the way to Greenville, frankly. So I, I think that, I think this maintenance yard is kind of, you know, a secondary issue here, but it looks like we, I just heard, we've, we've got the controls in place to ensure that it doesn't go north of the freeway. So the, the other thing that I'd like to ask about, and something that I've been very concerned about since I first started writing BART in the mid-'80s, and it's, we also just saw the, what machinations had to go through in order to get the parking garage in Dublin, and that BART wasn't putting that in there. Want to make sure that, and I believe we do, I just want you to make that quite clear to the public, that we do have a spot where we can have a parking lot for Livermore residents specifically, and that we're not going to be, and that we can control that, so it's not a Central Valley parking lot. Could you just speak to that?
Sure. I don't know if we can bring up the, the basic site plan, but at the main commercial location, we have a designation for a, a future parking garage that the city would pursue, and I don't know if you can, you can point to it there. And that is intended to serve Livermore residents.
Right, and I think this is very important, because, what is it, 3,000 on the waiting list to get a spot in, over in Dublin, so it's, it's clear that there's a disconnect between what BART does with parking and what the community wants. So I think that it's important that we have that covered here. And then the last thing I, I wanted to point out, because listening to the public comment, several speakers talked about, oh, it'd be great to have more housing, but I think as Councilmember Spodowski pointed out, and I just want you to reaffirm, this doesn't change the build-out numbers. So this is not a net increase in housing. So all those who thought, advocating for this to be done because they thought it would, it's not, is my understanding.
That's correct. This, your general plan build-out is not changing. You are essentially moving housing to a, an appropriate, well-planned location.
Councilmember Spodowski?
Sure. Question for, for staff. It, it relates to the BART parking garage. As I understand it, there's legislation being proposed that would allow BART to have land use control over parcels that they own, and I don't know if Mr. Tang has had any, from BART, has had any discussions or is aware of any discussions of, you know, this legislation, should it pass, what are the chances of BART saying, you know, we planned a parking garage there, but we'd much rather build housing that's just south of 580? Do we have any update on that legislation? Because it's, you know, we mentioned that the Dublin parking garage, that, that's a concern, and I don't know if anywhere in this plan, should that happen, do we need to condition another, you know, in the phasing that should they decide not to build the parking garage? Because that's exactly what the legislation is saying, that they, they have control, land use decisions over their own property, that local control is now lost. That, that's something that concerns me, so I don't know if you have an update.
It's AB 2830, 23.
Okay.
2823.
So, you know, the bill's in the early stages of going through the legislature. Staff did meet with one of the bill's authors and submitted comments on the bill, and one of them was to recognize airport safety zones when, you know, allowing any, any land use authority for BART. And the parking garage structure is located in Airport Safety Zone Three that does not allow any housing. The other thing to keep in mind is BART did an environmental impact report that assumes that the parking structure's built, and if they decided for some reason that they wanted to change that, they would have to reopen their environmental analysis.
Okay, so we, we have some level of assurance that should, and, and, you know, it's, legislation passes, the BART board changes membership, and somebody comes with an idea that, you know, suddenly we want to change something, it's just, hey, that, that's part of the problem, is, is promises made in the past, and then you have boards that change, and, and, you know, things, things happen. So I was a little concerned about that. And then one other question maybe for, I'll get you up here to speak, Andrew, at some point. I love, I love your answers to the questions, but have there been any discussions with BART about the system expansion policy? I, I know at one point, one of the board members suggested that they revisit the system expansion policy prior to this. Is that, are we still playing under the 1999 rules? Is that, are we locked in, so to speak?
Actually, I'll answer your previous question also. You know, the BART is taking a position against this legislation, so we're not, we weren't in, we weren't involved with writing it, and nor are we supporting it.
That, I love, see, that's why, I mean, I know you're here, and you got the, you got the inside info.
And with regard to the system expansion policy, we are still operating under the existing system expansion policy. There are some board, BART board members, I'll say, that have asked that the whole system expansion policy question be reopened. There has been no directive to the staff at this point to actually reopen it, and I would say, even if they did reopen it at the very next board meeting, there's pretty much zero chance that it would actually get revised in time for that to actually apply to BART to Livermore.
Sure, okay, so this would pretty much lock them in under that system expansion policy?
I think we're a pretty safe bet that you're locked in.
Great, thank you, that's great to hear.
Councilmember Coombes?
I just, let me try and formulate thoughts here. I'm troubled by making amendment to the scenic corridor policy, because it seems to open a door where I'm not comfortable going, and building heights may be an issue, we can't change the height of the, the hills, unfortunately, to have them rise above a development we choose. So that's probably one of the, the few troubling aspects, this is not a perfect plan, in my opinion, but it's one of those things that is, that policy was a significant one to me when it was, it came into being. And I don't...
And I don't, I remain troubled by it. And, you know, I can't do anything about the yard in North Livermore, because that's not in our, our domain. We can, however, you know, create alternatives to that, because I don't like it to go into North Livermore either. That's another thing. But especially the scenic corridor policy, that we've done so well to keep the urban growth boundary, for instance. The scenic, you know, scenic corridors made a special effort to make that happen. And then when it's not convenient, because BART wants a certain number of houses somewhere, then we change it. And it troubles me. I just, we get that on the record.
So, it was interesting. The council is frequently accused of not listening to the public. And of course, we've been all over the map today. But this is something that the public really wants. The public wants BART to Livermore. They've been very clear about that. Now, I keep hearing, you know, BART, the BART station has changed, I think, more times than the capital of California, as far as moving around. You talked to Bob Allen, and the first location for BART in Livermore was originally the downtown. It was the downtown. And in fact, BART voted in favor of putting BART into the downtown. And then it got back onto the freeway, and then this conversation about going back to Greenville. So it's been moving all over the place. But what hasn't changed is that people want BART to Livermore. Over 70% want BART to Livermore, and 80% want it on the freeway. So this is something that the community really wants. A few questions. So there was talk about the funding for it, and the people we've paid, we've been paying into BART for years. We've been paying into the BART operation for years. There's never been capital funding for BART to Livermore. As far as BART to San Jose, I think the state put up something like $1.4 billion for that. The feds put up $2.1 billion for that. And we got about $550 million right now. But, so there's, but that money's only gone to the operations. This is the first time ever that we actually have capital funding to start to bring BART to Livermore. And once this gets committed, then we can start looking for, for additional dollars. When I go back to DC, I keep hearing, oh, well, there's not a plan. There's no consensus in the area. That's what we're trying to do right now, is to build consensus. And I understand this concern about whether or not this, this plan's going to happen. If BART doesn't come in, the current zoning on this site is there, and that's what gets, that's what gets developed. But if BART doesn't, full conventional BART does not come to Livermore, this plan does not get implemented. It's that simple. We're not, I'm not going to move that many people with a bus. And we've been, we've been very, very clear about that. And as was pointed out by the city attorney, there are a series of triggers in place that are very clear to move that ahead. And again, it's, it's not about a bus, but it is about creating a transit density. Because if BART doesn't come in, we can't justify this level of development. And it's very inefficient to bring in a rail system to single-family housing units. It's just, people aren't going to walk that far, and you're not going to get the density to get people to use the, to use that. We are working on alternative yards, places, places to put a yard. And so that's, that's an ongoing discussion that we're going to have with BART. The, the airport, yes, that's, again, we had the airport safety zone, and the airport land, the Airport Land Use Commission did consider this. And, you know, people are talking about high buildings in the approach to an airport. Well, we're keeping the approach to the airport. That's still going to be open. But I keep thinking, every time I fly into San Jose, I mean, you're on the glide path in, and there's skyscrapers all around you. And that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about an airport protection zone that was really originally put in place to protect the airport from the noise impacts. And the question came up is, is there any other place that we can put this? Well, there again, because of the, the community, and I absolutely hear Councilmember Coomer's concern about the scenic corridor. And I think the staff has done a tremendous job of moving a lot of the, the most obvious buildings behind the overpasses, and behind some of the natural obstructions. But as far as moving this to some other place, well, North Livermore, we have the urban growth boundary. So you can't move it to North Livermore, because the urban growth boundary's in place. You can't move it to the north of the freeway where BART already has property, north of the freeway at Greenville, because you've got Vernal Pool Ferry Shrimp, you've got the Tiger Salamanders, the Almond Whip Snake, all of the other critters out there. So it can't go there either. So placing this has been a real effort. But what we've heard is that the community wants BART to Livermore. We've been paying for it for 50 years. And if BART doesn't come here, I understand, we're probably going to still keep paying for BART. And this, there's, that's never going to go away. So whether we get it or not, we're going to keep paying for it. And we're already $400 million into BART for the operations. So the community has said loud and clear that they want BART. And there's a series of trade-offs that we've made, and it comes down to, are these trade-offs worth it? And I think in the grand balance of what this community wants, what we've heard over the years, is that they're willing to make these trade-offs to bring BART to Livermore and get our $400 million worth. And this is, this is where there needs to be a, the connection, as we, as we connect the rail systems together, to connect the mega-region. So I think that this, these aren't easy, easy questions. But I think that in order for the, to improve the region, and for Livermore, the affordable housing component, the jobs, transit, getting students to the school, getting student, full trains going in both directions, I think that this really accomplishes a lot of goals, that vehicle miles traveled reduction, the greenhouse gas reduction, all of those environmental concerns that we've heard over and over again, the air quality impacts. This can address all of those. So this accomplishes a lot of goals that a lot of people in, in Livermore have wanted for decades.
So just a couple more comments before we, I guess, get to our comments and making motions and everything. I think even tonight, if we approve this plan, and BART next week approves full BART to Livermore, that is not the time to celebrate. You know, we've, we've been down this road before. I have an article here from the Daily Review, Wednesday, October 11th, 1989. I was a freshman in high school, stating that BART paid a whopping $7 million for the Greenville site, and a BART spokesman said, we're looking at 10 to 12 years before putting it to use. That was in 89. And also, they mentioned BART in 1988 bought a 54-acre site near the Livermore Municipal Airport. So that's, that's the parking garage in that site, I believe, there. And according to BART officials, waiting 10 years to build the transit complex is not an unreasonably long time. For one thing, it would be a major facility on the order of $150 million. So, I mean, this, my, my point is, we've, we've been down this route before, with the BART system maps at the time showing it going all the way out to Livermore. Another article, which was rather interesting, and I'd like to point this out, is when they were talking about expanding out to Dublin, the major employer in Dublin at the time was listed as Lucky's, one of the grocery stores. So that, that really shows you how long we've been working on this, and how we really need to figure out a way to make this work at this time. And I bring up this point because there's something that we haven't really talked about, and that's the cost-benefit ratio of this specific expansion. So as I understand it, it currently ranks as a one on the MTC scale of cost-to-benefit ratio for funding. I think Mr. Tang, you could tell, I watch the board meetings, and, and, you know, I pay attention to your slides. And it's, it currently ranked a one, and it needs to be around a five for consideration from MTC?
Well, let me fill you in on that whole story.
Sure.
Okay. So, MTC, when they develop, the Regional Plan Barrier, which was adopted in 2013, they put every project that asked for regional discretionary funding through what they call their project performance assessment, a BART extension to Livermore to Isabel, in fact, a BART extension to Isabel, a EMU to Isabel, and an express bus on I-580 were all assessed in that process. The BART extension got a BART benefit-to-cost ratio of one, the EMU got a cost-benefit ratio of one, and the express bus got a cost-benefit ratio of two. Now, that was, that was the Plan Barrier adopted back in 2013. Okay. So the MTC uses that process to then decide what projects to prioritize for their funding. And of course, as you know, their funding's limited, so they look at all the projects they have, and how much money they have, and say, well, we can get all the way down to some level of benefit-to-cost ratio and fund it, and below that, well, you're all luck. So for Plan Barrier, every project that was recommended for regional discretionary funding had a benefit-to-cost ratio of five or higher. So there was a recent Plan Barrier that was adopted just last year. There was also a project performance assessment process done in that. BART to Livermore was not included in that one. And every time they do this, the amount of money you have is different, the number of projects that apply are different, so the cutoff is different. So this time, every project that got approved had a benefit-to-cost ratio, I think, of at least three. So it's gotten a little, got a little easier. If BART does approve, if you approve the Isabel Neighborhood Plan, and then BART subsequently approves the conventional BART alternative, we'll need to go through that process with the MTC, you know, obviously, in the hopes of getting money from the MTC. That process is expected to kick off in 2019, and we really don't know exactly what the cutoff will be, because we don't know how much money it'll be, and we don't know how well this project will perform. It might actually perform, it'll perform a little bit better, because it's got the Isabel Neighborhood Plan this time. And MTC's methodology also tweaks every time they do this a little bit, and we don't know if it tweaks in a way they'll make it more better or worse.
And so my point is, I think we need to work with the BART board, and, you know, I would almost like some kind of joint meeting or summit with all the interested parties, because we have these dueling meetings. It's a council meeting, it's a board meeting, it's other councils, it's Tri-Valley, San Joaquin Regional Rail Group, to just all get on the same page about bumping up the feasibility of having a project funded. Because we're, we're looking at $1 billion for a five-mile extension for 12,000 riders over five miles. The Tri-Valley, San Joaquin Regional Rail Group is studying, you know, the potential for doing an EMU-type option from Dublin Pleasanton all the way to Tracy. And that's, you know, 7,000 riders roughly, but that's over 25 miles. So that's more mileage removed from 580 and better greenhouse gas emissions. So, I mean, there's still studies going on, and there's still options out there. But I think at this point, with what, within the parameters that BART studied, having only studied, it's just disappointing to hear people say, oh, EMU, DMU, it was only, you know, 7,000 riders, and it costs just as much as BART. Well, you, you studied it over a five-mile extension, and not going all the way out to Tracy, and the benefits of, of that particular project. So I think there are still more studies to come out. But within the context of what BART studied, it would be full BART, that would be our preference. Still, though, realizing that, you know, the work coming out of the Tri-Valley, San Joaquin Regional Rail Group may have an impact on what's eventually built. I mean, the, the group analyzed the connection at BART in Dublin and Pleasanton for the EMU, and found that maybe we don't need to take as much right-of-way, which was a major decision factor for at least Dublin and Pleasanton in supporting this project, is that they didn't want the, the right-of-way taken away. So I just want to say that this is not the end-all, be-all of the BART project, and, you know, we approved this tonight, and BART approves it, and it's, it's, you know, smooth sailing. It's, there's still a ton of work, and many things that we need to do.
And we still need to find a lot of money.
Which would be easier, and I've said this before, if we had day-one, phase-one plans to go all the way out to Tracy. Because you would, you'd be covering 25 miles instead of five miles, and that, that brings a whole different world of benefits.
And that county just needs to step up and provide some funding, or a mechanism.
You'd put a rail yard in Tracy instead of in Livermore. That's all I can say. But, and one other thing I wanted to emphasize is that I think this, we have stated before as a council, that the, the rail yard location in North Livermore just wasn't acceptable. So I'm glad to see that we have some assurances that if that were to continue, then this whole thing kind of goes away.
Okay. So we're three minutes before 11:00, so we need to take a vote as far as where we're going to go tonight. Do we, what is the pleasure of the council? Shall we power through? Because there's a couple of things on the agenda that we really need to pass tonight. So.
If we could take a couple of minutes for a quick break, that would be awesome, if we have time to do that.
Okay. So shall we take a quick break right now, and then consider, then we'll come back and deliberate?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's go five minutes, and then we will be back here for consideration. And then, wait, wait, I think I need to take a vote, right?
Yeah.
So we're going to, yeah, so, so we're going to finish out the rest of the agenda? Is that the consensus?
Yeah.
Okay. Finish out the rest of the agenda. All right. Thank you very much. Five-minute break. We'll be at 11:05. Okay. Good evening, and welcome back to round three of the Livermore City Council from May 14. We're continuing to talk about the Isabel Neighborhood Plan, and then we'll be following up with the rest of the agenda. But we're bringing it back to the council. We've just gone through the public hearing, the, some of the comments and questions from the city council. So we're back to, back to deliberating. So we're, what is the pleasure of the council, the Councilmember Carling?
I just wanted to make one more comment. I had inquired about, we had an individual, Mr. Steinbush, ask about his, the storage warehouse, and that.
Permitted use versus non-conforming.
Right. So that language has been altered, and, and appears in the supplemental memo that we got. So I think we did accommodate his request in the material we got late in the evening. So, okay. I just wanted to add that. That was another point that was brought up during the public hearing.
All right. So, further comments, considerations by the council?
I'll just say, on balance, I, I agree that, you know, in this very complicated situation, it's a lot of trade-offs, but I think it's worth approving.
Okay. We need to, okay, so there's five resolutions and five ordinances on this. So, so what I'd like to do is to take, take each one individually, because if you'd be so kind as to walk us through that, just make sure we get the right order the right way.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate that. I think, and I think we can break these into groups for you to consider. The first item on your, in your agenda is to adopt a resolution, adopting the SEQA findings. That's the first action before you. If we take that one, then we can take the next two concurrently. That's your specific plan amendment and your general plan amendment. I can walk you through the proposed language that I, I recommend you include with regard to the trigger. And that could also be where you continue your discussion, if you'd like concerning any amendments relative to the scenic corridor, the school district designation, or the heights on buildings. That's where those would naturally follow, followed by the fourth resolution, the five ordinances. If there's no, if, if you're comfortable with those, those can be taken in one action to introduce all of those. And then we can end on the fifth resolution, which is your request of BART. So my recommendation would be to begin with the consideration of the resolution number one concerning SEQA for these projects.
Okay.
So how move? Will we accept resolution number one, SEQA?
And I'll second.
Okay. Moved, and by Councilmember Carling, seconded by Councilmember Coomer. And again, just echoing what the vice mayor said, this is extremely complicated. And there's, and when you get something this complicated, you're not going to make everybody happy. But I think on balance, the environmental considerations, greenhouse gas reductions, vehicle miles traveled, all of those components, the, the environmental impacts, the, the... vehicle miles traveled, all of those components, the, the environmental impacts, the, the wishes of the community, like, all of those things to come, come together, I think the staff has done a phenomenal job. And I'd just like to, to commend the great work that Lori Parks has done, and especially recognizing that Lori is leaving us.
What?
But, and this is, this is her last meeting. So, I just wanted to highlight the great work that you've done on this. It's been absolutely phenomenal. So, that's a... You have been shepherding this along and herding these cats along the way. And I just wanted to, to recognize the tremendous work. I mean, not to minimize what Steve Rialin, Bob Bin, and Ashley McBride have done, and everybody else that's been working so hard to accommodate all these different constraints. But, you really have done a remarkable job, and I just wanted to, to recognize that before everybody goes home. So, thank you for that. And I think that on, on balance, you've been able to mitigate and to compromise and really come up with a plan that is extraordinary and that meets, meets so many different goals that, something this complicated, it's hard to get, make everybody happy on every single item. But I think that on balance, you've done a remarkable job. So, on that, we have a, first by, motion by Councilmember Carling, seconded by Councilmember Coomer, for resolution number one. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to the next, I would recommend that we can, you consider concurrently resolution two for your specific plan amendment, for the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan, as well as number three, your general plan amendment. I would propose a recommend, recommended change to those portions of the resolution on page 493 and 497 in your packet, so that the part of the resolution now reads, "Now therefore be it resolved that the city, that the Liver," I'm sorry. "Now therefore be it resolved that the Livermore City Council approves the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan SP-18-001, conditioned upon BART approving a conventional full BART extension to Isabel Avenue in Livermore." That'll be for your, for your IMP, in similar language corresponding for your general plan amendment 18-001 for page 497. With that, this would also be the area for you to discuss your, if there's any other amending motions that the council would consider relative to the school district designation, heights on buildings, scenic corridor, or other items.
And I, I can make those amending motions as part of both resolution two and three being approved because they have to be included in both resolutions.
That is correct. That's why they're, they're together.
So, I'll wait until the, if there is a, a first and a second, then I'll make an amending.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
So, I'll move approval of resolutions two and three with the language suggested by the city attorney, as just stated, and I can't repeat because it's getting too late.
That's why I stated it.
Exactly.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded.
And I'd like to make an amending motion then.
Okay.
I would like to include two items as an amendment. One is to designate the, the previously, I guess it was dual-zone school site to be primary school site. And then the second amending motion would be to change the height of the, the Shea Development, the, the location to the south from 470 to 485, if that's specific enough, since there's only one 470.
Okay, so, the amending motion, is there a second for the amending motion?
I'll second.
Councilmember Carling?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Councilmember Carling seconds the, the motion, the amending motion. So, we will vote on the amending motion first. Okay, so, on favor of the amending motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed on the amending motion? Okay, the amending motion passes. So, now we go back to the main motion. Are there any other amending motions that anyone wishes to make for the, the main motion? Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. This is a big, this is important. So, what I'd like to do, depart just a little bit, I would like to, to do this by roll call, if we could. Okay?
That's within the mayor's prerogative, yes.
Okay. So, with that, roll call, please.
On the main motion, Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Coomer?
Aye.
Councilmember Spadovski?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Aye.
Mayor Marchand?
Aye. Passed unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on through the rest of your agenda, resolution number four is with regard to a resolution approving the Housing Implementation Program Amendments, policy 18-001. So, I recommend you consider that item next.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move. We adopt a resolution approving the Housing Implementation Program Amendments.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by, moved by Councilmember Carling, seconded by Vice Mayor Warner. Any discussion on the motion? Once again, I'd like to do a roll call on this.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Coomer?
Aye.
Councilmember Spadovski?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Aye.
Mayor Marchand?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Now, we have a grouping of the five ordinances that are identified in your staff report and in your agenda. You can, I would recommend taking one action, if that's appropriate for the council, to introduce all five of those ordinances. They can be taken in one action.
Okay, do we have a motion for those five ordinances? Okay, I'll move it.
I'll soon move. Yeah, I'll move, yeah.
Okay, I'll move it. Councilmember Coomer, second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, this is for all five ordinances, is that correct? All right, so, with that, again, roll call, please.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Coomer?
Aye.
Councilmember Spadovski?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Aye.
Mayor Marchand?
Aye.
Unanimous.
So, we're down, let's see, that gets us to eight. Two more.
So, the last item before you now is number 10, which is to adopt a resolution stating the city's position to advocate for a full BART to Livermore extension. So, that's, that's your final action before you...
We're trusting him to plan something here.
He was obviously upset with what the city attorney was saying. He threw his name tag. I saw it.
So, the last item before you today is, for this particular item on your agenda, is a resolution recommending BART approve a full, a conventional full BART extension to Isabel Avenue in Livermore. So, that's your last item.
I'll move that one.
Motion is made by Vice Mayor Warner. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Coomer. Once again, roll call, please.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Coomer?
Aye.
Councilmember Spadovski?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Aye.
Mayor Marchand?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Okay, one more time here. Let's... That was, that has been a tremendous effort over the course of years. And I just want to say thank you to the staff for doing a tremendous, we're not done yet, folks. Just, we're not, don't, don't pack up yet.
Yeah, we're only halfway through.
Yeah.
Well, I, I also, as I, as I stated earlier, we're not done yet with this issue. So, I mean, yeah.
We just got to 5.01.
If I was clapping, it was with my fingers crossed.
We have 5.01, we got two, three, four, and...
Well, I, I'm talking about BART to Livermore, so there's still a lot of work.
But, there's been a tremendous amount of work done on this. And, yes, this is the beginning, but I think that a 5-0 from this council sends a very powerful message. I have been to every BART meeting, they discussed this, and carried the message from the residents of Livermore. And a 5-0 vote from the, the council carries a very powerful message. And, and they've heard that. In this way, once we can say definitively that there's consensus in this region, we can go back to Washington and we can start bringing back some funding for it. So, there we go.
I'd also like to thank the staff again. I, I, others have said that, but I think you guys really deserve the kudos that you've been getting from us and, and others. It's been a tremendous amount of work. And I appreciate the clarity and the, and the materials that you present to us, the, the drawings that you provided and so on and so forth. Were just very, very helpful in terms of understanding what we were discussing tonight and helping us make decisions. So, again, I think you guys have done a great job, and I don't know that everybody in this city knows. I think it was Ms. Monroe maybe mentioned earlier about the hidden talents that we have in City Hall, and I think the four of you exemplify that as much as anybody. So, thanks very much. And Lori, I didn't know you were leaving. I'm sorry to see you go.
Didn't want to get out the door without the recognition.
Wow. So, great job, you guys.
I second that.
Thank you. Sure. Okay, so, 5.02, kind of anticlimactic. Andrew, thank you very much. Certainly appreciate you hanging on here, and I'll, I'll see you next Thursday.
Yeah.
By the way, Bob Bin, Bob Bin, the meeting on the 24th, is that an evening meeting?
It is. It begins at 5:00 PM at the BART boardroom.
Okay, 5:00 PM at Lakeside. Okay, very good. Thank you.
And I just want to also, again, another shout-out to, to, to Mr. Tang for all of his work. I've seen him beaten up at meetings over this, and he just, very calmly and with all the facts, you know, he's kind of like, what was it, Joe Friday? Just the facts?
Just the facts.
So, thank you, Andrew, for working on this as well.
Thank you. And we're going to keep working together, aren't we, Andrew? Great. And Eileen DeMarcus, former board, BART board member. So, thank you for all of your efforts.
Honorable Mayor, you have three hearing items left, 5.02, 5.03, and 5.04. Staff is available to make staff presentations on there, or if you prefer on any of them, we are here to respond to questions. If, so, that depends on the pleasure of the council.
What's the pleasure of the council?
So, we are more than happy to, to give you a brief presentation, but understanding the late hour and that all of the information is in your packet. If you just have questions and want to make a motion, those things are...
I, I'm comfortable making a motion because I, like the city manager stated, I read through the packet. I don't have any questions. I think everything was, was pretty standard.
And of course, even without, even without a staff presentation, each of these are hearings.
So, I'm willing to waive the staff presentation.
Does anybody wish to see the presentation on 5.02?
Unless we need to formally open and close the public hearing.
You still need to open and close the public hearing. You can waive the presentation, yes.
Is there a motion for 5.02?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. We need to have, open the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
That's why it's under the hearing sections.
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing for 5.02. This is the hearing to consider adjustments to the rates charged by Livermore sanitation. I have no cards, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of 5.02.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Carling. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I just want to say that this changes the rates, but all the other aspects are not changed, right?
Right. And this is pretty much agreeing to what we had already previously agreed to.
That's what I thought. Yeah.
So, with that, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passed unanimously. You can go home. 5.03, this is the hearing to consider the action plan for community development block grant programs. I have, would anybody like to see the presentation?
I think if we have a brief presentation, if we have any speaker cards, I don't know if staff has highlights.
Well, one of the people that wished to speak has left, but that was Laura Calvert, and she wished to speak in favor of it. She is with Spectrum Meals on Wheels. So, she was in favor of that. Mr. Scott, would you like to see the presentation?
Sure.
Okay, very good. If you'd please?
Thank you, thank you. So, good evening. My name is Claudia Young. I'm the Human Services Program Manager. The action plan overview is that this is, the city is an entitlement to the city, to the federal CDBG funds, which are federal funds. HUD defines the process by which the community needs are identified and resources allocated. The city is required to submit an annual action plan identifying the proposed funded activities. And in addition to that, we are a member of the Alameda County Home Consortium, so the city of Livermore receives an annual funding from home. Since the Human Services Commission met and approved recommendations for council, on May 1st, HUD provided the final CDBG allocation for fiscal year 2018-19. It came in at $459,108. This was approximately $85,000 more than we originally expected. On top of that, on May 3rd, the county provided the final home funding allocations, which was $151,709, and that came in at $50,000 more than we expected. So, for the CDBG funds, the regulation requires that we could only use 15% of our entitlement and 15% of our program income as the base for our public services funding. The other, the other items that we could fund with the entitlement is capital improvement projects, economic development projects, or rehabs. For the home funds, it's very specific. The funds require that we fund only housing development funds or tenant-based rental assistance, which is what we're funding. So, in your supplemental, it includes the increases for both CDBG and for home. And staff is recommending approval of the action plan and also to allow us to submit to HUD and to the county for their report and to authorize the city manager or is designing to sign all related documents and make adjustments to the action plan as needed.
Okay. Questions for Ms. Young? Okay, very good. In that case, I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Scott?
Mr. Mayor, council, and staff, I'm confused on the process. 5.03, recommendation, the Human Services Commission and staff recommend the city council adopt the resolution approving the fiscal year 2018-2019 annual action plan. Well, the meeting for the Human Services Commission was on the 8th of May, and that was canceled. So, how did the Human Services Commission act upon the action plan? I don't get that. Here's the schedule from April. I, I just don't understand, you know, the process here for public input, and if, if the Human Services Commission didn't do anything on the action plan, what's their function? I don't quite understand that. How could they possibly make a recommendation if they never met on this? That doesn't, it doesn't make much sense. And, and plus, the Human Services Commission never approved the meeting minutes for the April meeting that I went to on what you approved unanimously for the grants. The public should really know about these grants. Just briefly, it's eight categories, the administration of which is one category, and that is a requested amount of $79,844, and recommended approval, and that's 95%, for $75,791. That is almost 11 times another category of career services. That's four and a half times another category for disabled, special needs. That is over three times another category for youth services. And that is over twice the category for public services, nutrition, and health, which includes spectrum community services, which requested $27,000, it got $12,000, and it's, can't seem to fund Meals on Wheels on weekends. And for senior services, it is over three and a half times the funding for that. This is very interesting when we speak of resources on these grants. The largest... The largest category is the capital grants. That is, the recommended is $569,191. There was one, Eden Council got 103% of their request for tenant-based rental assistance. If we look at the others here, three items here for the city of Livermore, all over 97% recommendation. The others are recommended under 55%. The public should really know where the resources are going.
When I went back to Washington DC in January and spoke with the folks at HUD, I was told that the CBD grants had been zeroed out, that there was no funding available. So, one of the issues that we have with the Human Services Commission is to take these limited resources. And as I pointed out earlier, we can't provide all the money that organizations want, but we can provide hopefully enough to make a difference. There was a question about the process and how this moved ahead if the Human Services Commission had not met. So if you could just provide a little information about how these funds are allocated and how much is... How do they decide how much is awarded?
Sure. So in December, the Human Services Commission met right before releasing the request for proposals. So they met, they had a public meeting in January. They had another public meeting. The RFP was released. The commission this year decided to do something a little bit different. Each one of the commissioners, they did subcommittees of four for different categories, homeless, seniors, just all the different categories, food. And four commissioners went out to each one of the categories and visited the agencies so they could learn more, learn more about everything that they do, not only just the portion that we fund and leverage, so that they can do so much more. So we wanted to give them time to make sure that they get that done before the applications were submitted. The applications were submitted at the end of February. So we pushed out their meeting until March so that they would have enough time to visit all the agencies. In March, we did not have a quorum. However, in April, they did meet. And that is when they reviewed the applications and approved all of the grant funding. And the recommendation required that if HUD released their allocation prior to the council meeting or after this council meeting, and we received an increase or a decrease, that we would adjust all the CDBG and home applicants accordingly. And that's what we have done.
Okay, so allocations are made at the April meeting?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, I'm going to... Is there any further questions for staff? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the council? Do I have a motion?
I'll move we accept the recommendation of staff.
I'll second.
Okay. Been moved by Councilmember Carling, seconded by Vice Mayor to approve the annual action plan, authorize the appropriation of the home investment partnership funds, the amount of $100,000, and then authorize in the city manager to sign all related documents and make adjustments as needed. So with that, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much for your comments, and we're going to keep working on this. Moving on to secondary dwelling units, 5.04. This is basically to bring us up to state codes.
Well, thank you very much, Honorable Mayor. I think that's the staff report. Oh, but if you have further, we do have a staff report available for you.
So the state's making us do this, and we're complying.
That would be a very short staff report. Yes. Essentially, we're making adjustments to our local code to bring it into compliance with the state requirements that were passed this last year.
Yep.
All right. Does the staff wish to see the... Or does the council wish to see the presentation?
I'm comfortable waiving it.
It's not going to hurt anybody's feelings, is it?
Not mine.
Not at 11:35? Okay. All right, so thank you for putting the presentation together. We have read the packet. I'm going to open the public hearing. I don't have any cards, so I'm going to close the public hearing. With that, bring it back to the council. Do we have a motion?
I do have a question. So this was passed or became effective a year ago, January. Why are we just doing it now?
We've been busy.
Well, I know we've been busy, but... Why didn't we do it earlier? I guess is a better... Another way.
There were also some that were rolled out at the beginning of 2018. But it just wasn't as high a priority as downtown, BART, Isabel, and a few other small projects that we've been dealing with.
Things like that.
Okay.
The other thing I would say is that we already comply with a vast majority of the changes that happen through this law. So there were only a few little cleanup things, and that further reduced the power of the judge.
Alright, that helps a lot. Thanks.
Okay, so... We have a motion and a second.
Sure, I'll move that we accept staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Carling, seconded by Councilmember Coumber. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to...
Mr. Mayor? We did continue the citizens forum, and if you were to...
Yes.
We would reconvene at this point.
So, we do... Thank you for... So we just got through the public hearings, and as indicated, we would go back to the citizens forum. Is Heidi Davidson still in the audience? Heidi Davidson? That was a Springtown. Roger Logan? Mr. Logan? Dr. Logan?
Good evening, barely.
So late, it's early.
Kind of is. I just noticed, looking around, the whole contingent back there is here for the wildlife at the ponds. I think we outnumbered just about everybody else at this late hour. Really do care about them. We went to visit the pond today, my wife and I, and there's three ducks kind of flying around, and then they finally lit up near us. I swear they were coming up and, you know, asking if I was going to attend the meeting tonight. So I told them that, yeah, I definitely was going to raise this issue. They seemed happy with that. The ducks are probably the most visible species there, but, you know, of course, there are others too. And we're still not certain how much they're all suffering because we just don't see them. The endangered frog study that the city did have done didn't really find the species there. But then again, for example, the survey was only done after, for a two-week period. And in talking to US Fish and Wildlife, which I have done since then, they really said it should have been taken over a nine-month period. Did we miss any species? We don't know. We don't know what the chances of anything being there are. But, you know, we're not, I think, as certain about some of this as we could be. So, you know, in my mind, as we wait for the $27 million or whatever it is to magically arrive to do this whole project, we might still consider hedging our bets a little bit as we go along. Maybe apply for the couple of water permits that we don't have to bring water down to the existing ponds to help the animals stay in their homes through the summer. Maybe someone will say no. Maybe they won't. You know, maybe there'll be a reason we can't do it. But I don't see where it's going to hurt to apply in doing that and see what answer we get. In the meantime, the issue's been raised already. Well, we don't have a pump to get water down to those ponds. Okay, let's look at that while we're waiting for the permit. We don't need a big giant pump, and this was just pointed out to me just tonight, like we did to do all the landscaping of the golf course. We would just need water down to the ponds should we decide to do that. Again, it's not going to cost a whole bunch just to look into those issues while we wait. And while we wait too, I think we might want to consider, if we implement this plan in stages, some of the elements of it, just based on some safety advice that I would have. You know, kids on wheels and cars never did mix very well. And we're planning a skate park right there on Blue Bell where it's going to put a tremendous safety risk to everyone. I did appreciate staying for the BART discussion because I enjoyed hearing the benefit-cost ratio raised. I was one of those that pioneered that technique out at Livermore Lab. And I wondered, as a final point, have we done benefit-cost, et cetera, on this whole thing with the ponds and the golf course and this and that? Maybe I can find out, but I'm not aware of any such study. Thank you for your patience, anyway.
Thank you. If I could just make one point with staff. We're going to this for 10 years. But the community in that neighborhood had the opportunity to set up a landscape maintenance district in order to keep the golf course open. And the overwhelming majority opposed that, even though, as I recall, the amount was $10 a month. About $125 a year was the number that I heard if the community had elected to maintain landscape maintenance district, which would have kept the golf course open. But they overwhelmingly declined. But that would have been an opportunity to have kept this going. But the city made the decision to no longer subsidize that enterprise. Just like that.
Hello, good evening. Dear Mayor and Ms. Mayor, this is Councilmember, citizens of Livermore. My name is Jonas Nitzler, an incoming engineer from Germany. I live in Springtown, together with another scientist, for about seven months now here in Livermore. I feel honored to speak here tonight. As a special citizen of Livermore, to state my concerns about the current open space concept in the city. And the concern situation. It is not under least my aim to interfere with the decisions made by the citizens. Nevertheless, I would like to take the opportunity to attract attention to some issues under democratic processes. That leaves, in my opinion, still space verification. I believe in democratic principles. And during this time, not all people are satisfied with the current solutions. As a great amount of citizens have doubts and concerns concerning details of the current open space plan, and the part of the necessary requirements especially concerning transparency and information politics were fulfilled. I think it's important to consider a couple of points. We had quite often, the decisions already made, people had time to vote, and there was several options to choose from. And question the basic statements, and I believe that the city has followed those procedures. I think, nevertheless, the citizens have the obligation to question the decision-making. If a criticism comes to citizens, what's not aware of the problem with the pond, and the current details for the open space plant, and the pond removal, concerns matters, matter to engage the citizens in the process of governance. People excited and interested again to make politics, and community participation important again. Concluding, I would like to summarize my questions. It would be interesting for a lot of citizens to have insight in the vote concerning the open space plan. As far as I know, there were five options to choose from. And it would be interesting to have some numbers and see some percentages, how many people actually were informed and voted for optional number three, or whatever currently is decided to. Another thing that is interesting, as far as I know, one of the options already included the pond. So, the last have been some investigations on how the water supply would have been done. Whereas currently, it is communicated that getting access to water is seems to be a very difficult issue. Also, I heard that the company, namely ISA, conducted a research evaluating the environmental situation. It would be interesting to see or to have access to that evaluation, and what they concluded. Also, for me, it's hard to believe that conducting the current plan of a skate park or removal of the pond is really cheap, but then just maintaining the pond and containing the wildlife. And it would be interesting to see a cost comparison. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, I think. Anyway, it's been a very interesting evening here tonight. A lot of powerful things have happened. And it's incredible. BART's coming. Awesome. All the while, I noticed that there was a lot of stress in the room as well. And yes, we're back with the Springtown ponds and the problem of getting water to it. I've done a lot of research, and there doesn't seem to be that kind of a problem. And I spoke to someone actually this evening, about 10 minutes before I left, from the California Water Service. And he suggested, how about recycled water? We have a lot of it, and it's out by the airport. And down there, they even have a pond where tilapia swim in it. And they have so many tilapia, they're so happy, they have to kind of like take them out and keep them away from the other tilapia. Anyway, in conjunction with what Dr. Logan said, in conjunction with Jonas said, and what everybody's saying, please, let's have the open space, but let's include this beautiful heritage of a pond that's been there for 50-something years, probably older than most of us in this room. We owe it to Livermore to keep that here. That's what Livermore stands for. Let's get it done. Let's bring back the pond so that all these people that are running back and forth to BART from work and home can go to the pond and look at it and sit down and be tranquil. Watch the ducks, watch the fish, watch everything happen. It's a beautiful ecosystem. It's not so beautiful right now. It's horrible right now. And if anybody's not seen it, I suggest you go over and take a look at it because it'll bring tears to your eyes. It's horrible. It's just horrible. Thank you very much for your time, and maybe everybody can go out now and have a glass of wine from Livermore. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Quick question, if I may. So, there's been a lot of people that are speaking against the addition of a skate park. Now, the city of Livermore did not conduct the community outreach. Who is the one that did the outreach? Who's the... Is best suited to deal with parks?
That was done by LARPD.
Okay, so LARPD was... They did the public outreach, and it was... They came up with the idea for the sports park? Based on public input?
Right. The sports park was...
Oh, the sports park, the skate park.
Skate park. Came up through the public outreach process that was organized by LARPD, and that was included in the final program.
Okay, alright. Thank you. John Stein? Jacob Anderson?
The redheaded stepchild. When I first came to Livermore, there was one fountain in Springtown and one fountain downtown. Now there's no fountain in Springtown and four fountains downtown. The city spent $550,000 on an outreach program for the downtown and is planning on spending $3 million a year to basically pay for the infrastructure. I think Springtown feels that they're getting the short end of the stick. I mean, they would like something unique that perhaps the south side of the city doesn't have. I mean, they used to have a full-service library. They used to have a full-service shopping center. Now they have strip malls. They don't have any quality restaurants. They were promised a high school...
Hop Divine might take exception to that.
I'm sorry?
Hop Divine might take exception to that.
Mm-hmm, okay. But they feel left out. I mean, they were promised a high school, it's still not there. Almost everything is a 10-minute drive. There's little bus service. I mean, it's just the same everywhere in the valley, but everything is a 10-minute drive if you want to do anything. And the pond is something that people come from all of the city to see. It may be possible to use recycled water. It would probably require one truckload a week from the reclamation plant, from the pond with the tilapia in it. During the time that the golf course didn't have water, they used the fire hydrant, which is not legal, but they did it. But anyway, it seems like they basically do feel like the redheaded stepchild. And this is sort of the tipping point. Also, I'd like to ask that you adjourn this meeting in the memory of Bob Brown. He was intimately involved in the South Livermore Plan, the Isabel Expressway, the first downtown-specific plan, the extension of North Mines Road, a whole host of things. He was the Public Works Director for most of the '80s and '90s here in the city. And he... and he recently passed away. Also, to conclude, I wish you all that you lived to see BART come to Livermore, having watched the process of government for the last almost 45 years. BART will probably come here long after all of us have passed away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Jacob Anderson? Carl Wintey? Felicia Scranton?
First, I'm sure Carl Wintey will thank the staff. You guys are just amazing. You guys do a lot. So I'm going to say it, and I know Carl will probably say it as well. And also, thank you, council, for all that you do. I am not going to speak about the Springtown pond. About two months ago, I got up here and I talked about how a group in Livermore was making their voices heard through their spending of excessive amounts of money. I mentioned that night that I felt the community group, formerly known as the now-terminated Political Action Committee, Friends of Livermore, was in violation of the California's rules and regulations regarding spending and donating large amounts of money without registering as a recipient committee. To me, it was clear that the community group spent and received well more than the $2,000 threshold that requires a multipurpose organization to register as a recipient committee. In fact, it's possible that the community group had received and spent more than $15,000 this year. After that night, the community group did not publish any more ads in The Independent. That is, until May 3rd, the community group published this ad in The Independent both the 3rd and the 10th. This, to me, shows that they have no regard for the rules and regulations of our state. So as of today, I have submitted a formal complaint to the Fair Political Practice Commission. I hope that the FPPC will soon be investigating the community group's violations of the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Carl Wintey? Felicia Scranton?
How badly do y'all want to go home? Mr. Mayor, council, thank you all for what you do, your commitment to this city to make it a better place. Staff, you're awesome. It ain't a perfect world, and I appreciate what you do of the people, for the people, by the people. Good government, it continues to be a process. So as we go, may it continue to be, and listening. You guys listen a lot. You have, you have to listen to a lot, and I feel like you adjust and go. And staff, you come in, if it's late in the game, people that come in late in the game, it makes me want to scream a little bit because, discipline yourself on the public domain. Go to the subcommittees and otherwise and figure out what's going on before it actually gets up in front, and we're there. But if not, if it's late, speak your truth, speak what you believe in because it is of the people, for the people, by the people. We're afforded that opportunity to do so. So I salute you. You listen. The organization formerly known as the Friends of Livermore, which is under investigation with FPPC, now there's another complaint going in. It'll be interesting to see how this plays out, right? They just flip it over. You all made a decision to take away those limits, and I'm not sure I totally agree with that decision. So now that rolls into, does it matter anymore? Because they can just, they, people that are heavily funded, there's two people, if you go back to the city clerk and go through that, two people that wrote a lot of big checks out there. Now, it doesn't totally matter that they need to channel it through the Friends of Livermore PAC or whatever if they come up with a community group. City council ignored inputs of residents. No, nay, never. You guys heard it. You did it. It was a process that went through, and you listened. It's not perfect. Remember, I read Benjamin Franklin, this constitution ain't perfect constitution. I'll probably never call it a perfect constitution, but it's still more perfect than any other that I could imagine we could achieve. We got a good plan. Parking problems, worse. I wish people would listen to what you and your staff put out. Like, trust the engineers to go through it. What could be worse than that dirt lot, for crying out loud? Right? I mean, it's not going to be worse. Does it have everything you want? My grandma, she's 91. I took her downtown, she walks like Yoda, right? One step. One step. I felt compassion, right? We had to find, we found a spot, but it was still tough to get there. So having good ADA, having accessibility, it's key. It's important. It matters to me, and I don't need it yet. Someday it will. I forgot to thank those in uniform. Thank you for what you do across all. We appreciate it. City council plays 130 units and four stories in a bad location. Seems to me these people would rather put them out by the tracks? Come on. By the, right next to the bankhead? That made them choke. Right? I mean, if we had to put them there, and it seems that we do, although, Mr. Alcall, I haven't seen the memos that I think are forthcoming as it relates to how much could go out there, so I look forward to seeing those memos. I don't think we'd push more offsite. Bad location? Come on, it's not that bad. They rejected the opportunity to give the beautiful Central Park? I think you did a pretty good job of formulating all that. There's lots of open space, the stockman showed up, I'm glad they did. Did a pretty good job. We got to stand up and reject this. This is not true. This is dishonest. This is unethical, and god darn it, I'm ready to pick a fight, if I haven't already. Patricia Moore, I know my time's up, you'll get a cane soon. Patricia Moore, who educated herself in city government, I salute you. Others, do it. I saw Susan out front, I had no idea she was retiring, I gave her a hug. Sorry to see you go. She said, Carl, thank you so much for educating yourself on civics and how it works. Meant a lot. And she meant it. She said, I appreciate it. Appreciate what you're doing, trying to educate. May we all educate, and may we all reject just false narratives.
Thank you, Mr. Wintey. Thank you. And Felicia Scranton? Felicia Scranton? Nope. Okay. We are done with the citizens forum. Thank you very much for all of your comments tonight. We're not done yet, no, but thank you for your comments tonight. Certainly appreciate that. Moving on to 6.01, matters for consideration, discussion, and direction regarding appropriation of funds and execution agreement for substantial conformance with grade tech for the construction of the West Jack London Boulevard widening project.
I can if they want it.
Thank you all.
I'm willing to waive the staff report, but...
I am, too, except for one thing.
I was okay the first time.
I know you were.
Also, you know, it's no, you know, what I said before? Control C, control V, cut paste it.
I did want to ask Ms. Sheets, though, about, so what was it? I know you had a couple of conversations with bike, East Bay.
East Bay.
East Bay. And I'd just like to know what the, and you said you accommodated some of their asks. So what, what were they? I couldn't really tell exact, I mean, I, I understand the final plan, but what was it that they, that you changed to accommodate their interests?
So I'll briefly go through those. The eight-foot bike lanes that we have out on Jack London have been modified to be six-foot bike lanes with two-foot buffers, so they're now buffered bike lanes.
Oh, okay.
We added another two-foot, two-foot buffer on the eastbound bike lane on the west approach to buffer it another two feet from the right turn lane. So it's now a 262 on that lane, so it gave it extra buffer from the right turns. We did modify the westbound bike lane on the east approach back to the five foot.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we shrunk it to four and then put it back to five. We added a, what is called a lateral shift, I'm sorry, thank you, a lateral shift for the eastbound bike lane so that, and basically what a lateral shift does, it takes the bicycle facility and moves it out to where it'll match its through, its through progression so that it's moved out before the right turn conflict occurs while doing...
That's where the green striping is?
Yes, so we have the green striping, and you push the bike lane out before, and we added delineators at that location prior to the conflict zone so that cars couldn't make that right turn until after that shift had occurred. And further, we extended, as part of the east approach, we had to add a, a through lane for motorists. That squeezed the lanes down to 10-foot from their current 13 and 12-foot. They had asked that we extend those narrowed lanes back further so that the traffic would actually slow down before they got to the intersection. So we've shaved the median to make sure the trajectory for the, the narrowed lanes is correct, and added another painted median to make sure that the cars are now traveling at 10-foot and a narrowed lane all the way into the intersection.
Okay, wow. Well, thanks for that.
There's no speaker cards, I'd like to move 6.1.
Can I have a speaker card?
I don't, I think that raccoon's making some more noise back there.
Yeah, exactly.
Man?
Would you make a comment?
Yes, I mean, may I?
Oh, please. Mr. Wintey?
I would like to say thank you very much, and that's good government in process. You took feedback, you made adjustments, you made the world a better place. I appreciate you.
I also need to make note that there is one correction in the council report where it refers, in the fiscal section, it refers to the, in the one, two, second sentence, it refers to the $1.43 million as including the proposed modifications. That does not include the proposed modifications. Later on in the report, it does note that if you approve the proposed modifications that we've just noted here, that we'll come back to you with a request for some additional funding to incorporate those into the project.
My motion still stands.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Spodowsky, seconded by Vice Mayor Warner. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, seated by saying aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you, and thanks to these guys for putting it together.
All right, here's a second here.
Tilapia.
With that, okay, let's, we can come back and do the matters initiated, unless somebody's going to matter to initiate tonight, we can do the council reports and matters next time?
I just have one question. Fire away. I didn't quite understand the Royal Mocho situation. Are you going to, are you going to explain that to us maybe next time?
If the council would like, we can bring back some information on that. We're in the process of reaching it.
That's the request.
To Zone 7.
Is it like a, like a, nodding off or agreeing? It's like an agreement.
All right, so, pardon me? Yes. So we're all, okay, so we're going to continue that to, next time you got your question, anybody have anything they have to initiate tonight? That, meeting adjourned?
If you want to do it for Bob.
Oh, yes. Adjourn the meeting in memory and honor of Bob Brown, who served this community for many years as the planning director. So adjourned in his memory. Thank you.